Those tomatoes this year?
Yeah.
Mine are durable, mine are too.
Something got in last year.
Little filler part this year.
Malcolm, how you doing?
That's exactly it.
Well, we're going to go ahead and start our meeting. It is Tuesday, June seventeenth, and this is a City Council work meeting, and we want to welcome the Terrastrata Group here with us. Then we're going to be discussing things with the proposed upcoming Smiths development. So, we had another last City Council meeting, and was requested by City Council that we have another work meeting that we can talk about some of these things, and so we're happy to have you. Lisa told me she might be just a little bit late. I haven't heard from Debbie.
Sorry.
So, okay, but we have an upper corum, so we are going to go ahead and get started. And so, what we're really hoping, we have an hour and a half before our work meeting, just shy of five or six minutes of our City Council budget meeting starts, but we're hoping that we can really come up with a tentative plan. You know, after the last City Council meeting, there were some questions that came up as far as where we are moving from here, what the city would like to see, perhaps what your group would like to see. So, I don't know if you would like to start and have anything to present to us, and then we wanted to say, I hope to be just an open dialogue of how we make this work for all of us.
We're not sure, but we're trying to get clarity, and maybe you can maybe tell us where we're at. We're trying to piece together the recommendation, like we said, of the Planning Commission, which we have a lot of respect for, where they recommended a total, at least planned unit of some nature over the whole thing. We have, I think, moved away from that, back to our regional submental, half acre lots and third acre lots with a PUD around the commercial. Is, I don't know whether that has consensus or not, or at least are three votes or not, maybe not consensus. And we're looking for a little, or maybe it doesn't have any votes. Okay. So, I, I got the impression that you, the council was leaning that direction, but I don't know.
And I don't think the Planning Commission recommendation was to do away with the third acre and half acre lots. It still included that concept.
That's great, it is.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's how I felt that the recommendation was. So, I think what we were trying to focus on was more what the PUD would look like, and more towards the CRA as well. Those two things were the focus of our meeting last time.
I think, I think down, I downed the motion, last City Council meeting, you're here, where the motion pretty much consisted of what the Planning Commission recommended. And so, I think, I think the big hiccup, I mean, just get right to the point, it's the CRA.
Okay.
You've indicated that it won't work for you guys. You've indicated it's not probably a good decision for us to get locked into something like that.
So, I have a question about the CRA. The CRA, as I understand it, and I'm not an expert on them, but I know a little bit, the CRA, and maybe Jason in his, or Mr. Berningham in his, his report, talked about sales tax. We would never, at least I wouldn't, ask for increment on sales tax. Sales tax is a hundred percent the city's. What we're talking about is a property tax, and, and you done, I think, on the fireworks fire. But what it does is, the property tax entities, the county, mosquito abatement, the city, anybody who gets property tax, they have no property tax until, additional property tax until something's built. If nothing's built, they stay the same. But if something's built, we go to them and tell them we'd like fifty percent or seventy-five percent of that increase in property tax that they're going to get if we build something. So, they get more money because they would, wouldn't have any. And what you do as a city is you distribute that, because if we take fif, let's say fifty percent of the increase in property tax, that property tax goes to the school district, mosquito abatement, a little bit goes to the city, but you spread the cost of the lift station over the entire property tax area, county or school district area. And by not doing a CRA to take care of your infrastructure, that infrastructure and the Smiths or whatever, the grocery store, I mean, quit using Smiths, but the grocery store will be servicing a bigger area than Hooper. And so, if you, if you want to burden just this project with that lift station, one is it financially can't be done, but it actually puts an, an increased burden on future residents of that area, because we either got to raise our lot prices, increase our costs, and it actually is a bigger burden on that area of Hooper, when you could distribute that tax burden out to those property tax areas for fifteen or twenty years. And they would be getting more property tax than they have today, because they don't get any. And you'd be able to make it functional for us to, 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 to do the project now. That's, I mean, you, you've done them before, and so, the, the, I guess the county fire says yes or no, but if they, if somebody came with the, if somebody came to the county fire with a hundred percent proposal, and probably some do, you'd probably say no. But if they come with fifty or seventy-five, they may not have anything if they say no. And so, they have to make that determination, but we can't go to them until we have at least a nod from you saying, uh, we would rezone this. And I think it's beneficial to Hooper City to spread the proper, the, the burden of the lift station beyond Hooper City, because the store will service people outside of Hooper. And by not allowing us to do that, you're actually making Hooper, or the, the future residents of this project, pay for a, a bigger burden than they would have if you did the CRA. Does that make sense?
So, one clarification, I'm having-
I have another view, but that's okay.
Well, a question that is, came up, that people have asked me, because they've been told this, that for five years, Hooper City would, would receive no sales tax income from Smiths. So, if I'm understanding you, that's not correct. The sales tax would all come to Smiths.
Start, start as soon as they sell their first Twinkie.
Okay. Because I, I, that, that's a question that's going to ask me, and I thought that was different.
So, we thought that sales tax-
Yeah, I don't know if that's correct.
Property tax and utility tax to boot, were all going to be in the CRA.
We, no, that Jason says they can be, but we've never proposed them. Jason, Jason won't even call me back.
You think because we don't have, you think because we don't have property tax, that they'll ask us to contribute our sales tax, to participate in the CRA?
That's, that's part of it.
Well, the, so, um, one of the challenges-
Just trying to understand it.
Yeah, and, and maybe, can I, is there a, if I back up and walk them through this?
Yeah, but, but, but the biggest property tax entity is the school district. And they're going to determine this. It's not going to be Hooper. Hooper's property tax is nothing.
Yeah.
And so, it's going to be the school district that's going to have to decide whether they'll allow the CRA. And that's what, that's what's going to happen, because you're right, it doesn't affect Hooper hardly at all. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering if maybe you can have these around. I just did a quick summary of this tax increment financing, and hoping to kind of just walk through the basics of it, to make sure there's no misunderstandings. Here, here's, here's your copy. Can you give a copy around? So, so I just quickly summarized this, and, and what we were proposing is a twenty-five acre shopping center that would bring jobs, sales tax, and hopefully a lift station is critical to the build out of the city. So, the, the question kind of comes in, how do we fund the, the lift station? One option, okay, so, I think when you read the LRB study, there's multiple options, and that's what he identified, but one option is just tax increment financing, which is typically through property tax, okay? So, let me walk you through that. So, if the City Council were open to do that, they could designate a community reinvestment area, which could be this project area. What that would do, when you do that, is it freezes the property tax base. So, if the current property is, let's, let's use rough numbers, let's say it's, it's a million dollars property tax value, or assessed value, it freezes that, okay? And all of the government agencies will continue to get the taxes, the property taxes, on that amount. I don't know if that makes sense to everyone. So, they continue to get that base amount. The only thing that is shared-
And they don't lose any property tax they're getting today.
That's correct.
They keep all the property tax they're getting today.
So, the, the growth, or the new valuation after the project's complete, the, the tax increment-
The increase in taxes.
The increase in taxes on that will go to this taxing agency that you will control.
Part, part of them.
Yes, depending on what you-
Yeah, we, we won't take all of them, we take fifty or seventy-five percent of it. So, the, those other entities will get additional tax.
So, the, the, what they always say is, um, this is, this, these projects are done, that this is put in place, if, if it didn't happen, the project wouldn't move forward. So, you're kind of comparing no tax increase versus a tax increase in your revenue stream. And what that new tax increment-
Not a tax increase, but a revenue increase.
Revenue increase.
Because we're not increasing taxes, make sure we understand that, we're just increasing the amount of taxes.
I think the part I'm kind of getting confused at, you know, this, the property being taxed today is, we'll just call it green belt tax, it's an ag tax, right, which is very-
Low.
Right, really, really low. So, that won't be touched, I, I, I get that, but, but, but the, the new value of that property tax after the store is built and all that, that's where this comes, comes from.
That's correct. It's the new value, it's the new, it's the growth, let's, let's call it the growth.
So, what, what percent of that are, are we talking?
So-
So, that's a really good question, and I'm, I'm going to get a little wonky, then I'll let you go ahead. But underneath your green belt tax, you only pay it on a, on a very small percentage, but they still evaluate the property. So, if it weren't in green belt, you'd be paying, instead of a hundred dollars an acre, you may be paying a thousand dollars, okay, or, or whatever it is, a hundred dollars for the project. They, they actually, I think what they do is they take the underlying value, and so, you, they get a thousand dollars an acre versus a hundred, and then, because that underlying value gets frozen. So, it's like taking it out of green belt, and the, and the school districts get that additional revenue, it gets pulled out of green belt. So, whatever the base revenue is, they keep. Does that, I'm being a little, I, I need, I don't know if I'm explaining it right, but you had a good question.
But there's also, who, who pays those back taxes then?
Typically-
During the last five years that's been in green belt?
Either the, I'll have to look at our agreement, either the seller or the buyer. I can't remember what we're doing here.
We're splitting it.
We're splitting it, okay, okay? That's in the offer. So, we split it and pay the back, but, but, but soon as we bring it out, we don't, the, the increase in taxes isn't, isn't the green belt amount, it's, it's if it weren't in green belt. So, the counties and the school districts get the additional tax increase, as if it was not in green belt, and then we add the buildings on top of it. And when we add the buildings, Brett can talk about it.
So, basically, if you just follow this, I'm on the, on the third paragraph here. So, we designate the community reinvestment area, we freeze the current property tax base. So, whatever those taxes have been, they'll stay there.
And that tax base is not the green belt taxes, it's the taxes as if it weren't in green belt.
Just the value of the property.
Value of the-
Not including the store, just the value of the property.
Value of the property.
The original, yes.
Whatever it's valued at today on the county records, and you'd be paying full more property taxes on it, it gets frozen at that, not the green belt tax rate, okay? So, so if it's in green belt, the school district actually gets a kick right there, gets more money, because they don't get any money if it's in green belt.
So, the, the increased value, so let's say that, let's say the property was valued at a, a million dollars, it's probably different than that, but let's use that number, and let's say that after that, the, the shopping center is complete, let's say it's fifty million dollars, okay? So, the gap would be forty-nine million dollars, right? And that tax increment then would get split based on the way that the agency gets set up. So, let's say it was fifty-fifty, because that makes the numbers easier. So, that forty-nine million, um, half of it would go to the other taxing agencies, half of it would go to the CRA to help assist with building the lift station. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. And then let me keep walking through it, we'll come back when we can ask some questions, but that means there's really no new taxes for the residents. The risk, it, it, there's no risk to existing city revenues based on that. These are increases, and you get to keep an administrative fee for running that program. There's a ten percent administrative fee that is, is allowed.
So, the city, the, well, the redevelopment agency, the CRA, takes an administrative fee off the top, so you get some city revenue off of that.
So, here's kind of what the before and after. The before, it's vacant land or lower, a low value use. After, you got a grocery store, a multi-tenant retail pads. Now, before, you got a low taxable value. After, you got substantially increased property values. One of the things that, that I, I failed to mention, so let's say we built the, the lift station, and let's say now the lift station's built, and you're having additional users come in, residential users or commercial users come in, and they start paying impact fees towards the lift station. This tax increment could be paid off sooner and get it back on the tax rolls. Does that make sense to everyone? So, let's-
Your impact, impact fees-
Let's, let's say that, let's say it was a three million dollar lift station, and this increment could fund all the three million dollars. If those impact fees paying off, every, everyone that knew was coming in, that could pay off this CRA and get it back on the full tax rolls, going back to all the agencies sooner. Does that make sense, or is that?
You could either pay it off sooner or not.
So, you have X amount of dollars you've got to repay, you just pay on it, not necessarily fifteen to twenty years, but whatever.
Yes, whenever it's done.
The debt is paid off, you're done.
You're done.
But that difference is residents coming into that area, right?
Or you could keep the impact fee and not pay it off, that's up to you.
Or you could use it for other improvements, there's another option.
So, but, and the, the difference is, and one of the reasons why you've probably never done this before, is that these can only be done in commercial areas. And so, we changed the law last year to allow for some of it to be done in commercial areas and residential areas, if the residential is low in, is-
Moderate income.
Moderate income. There's nothing low income anymore. It's like first home buyer, five hundred thousand dollar homes, but they have to be owner occupied, they can't be rented. And there's a deed restriction, they have to be owner occupied. And so, then you could take the increment off the house and use it, but right now, if you don't have that restriction on it, you can only take increment off of the commercial property. So, it doesn't affect any of the residential property unless it has that restriction on it. Does that make sense?
So, currently, our sewer's impact fee goes directly to, um-
Central.
Central. Some, so how much?
Some, so we have a certain amount, so we charge our residents every month a sewer fee, and part of that goes to Central Weber to pay that, part of it goes to pay off our bond, because we still owe seven million dollars on our sewer, and a part of it they put aside for maintenance.
I'm, I'm not talking about the monthly, I'm talking about the impact when they build, like Stuart's talking about, when a house comes in.
It's like two grand to Central Weber and four grand to us.
To Central, so we don't get anything, so that, that's-
Two grand to Central Weber and four, four grand to us. Two, two grand out to Central Weber and four grand to us, about six.
Per house. Per house.
Good.
Yeah, so it's closer to sixty-five hundred together, it's like forty-two hundred and twelve, two hundred or something, something like that, I can pull it up.
So, the other thing with the CRA is, there's all these taxing entities.
Yes.
And we're going to go to every one of these taxing entities.
We're going to go to-
You are, and say-
If they tell us no, we're, we're, we're done.
Right, well, that's just it. What if, what if, uh, the fire district says yes, and the school district says no, and, you know, what if you get half that?
And we come back and say, it doesn't work for us, and you don't give us our zone. And that's why a, a motion that says this rezone is contingent upon a development agreement, and the development agreement will have this in it, and we don't know what it is yet, because we haven't gone out to the taxing entities. And we can't do that till we have the rezone, we got a chicken and an egg problem, and we got to figure out how to, you, you, you got to cut us loose to go try, and if we fail, we fail.
One, one thing we do know, however, is, um, Weber County's already indicated that they're on board. And, and on some of the other projects, we, we did a project similar to this up in Washington Terrace, and the, the school district agreed to that one. So, um, we, we have seen successes in this area, um, and, and it's really because they, they're forward-thinking and, and wanting to increase the values and the economic development opportunities in the county.
And this is a classic CRA. If there weren't a sewer lift station, and if we were just putting in curb and gutter around it, and we were asking for a CRA, I've been on the City Council, I would not approve it. But when you have a, a lift station that should be distributed through the, a big project like that, this is where a CRA works, because if you don't get the lift station, you don't have the project. And if you don't have the project, you don't have the additional revenue. So, for a, for a, for infrastructure like a lift station, that's what CRAs were built for. This is a classic use of a CRA to be able to take care of an improvement that is bigger than the project.
So, because Hooper City's portion of the tax is so miniscule to begin with, would the city's, um, non-participation, and let's just say, Hooper City said no to participate, but everybody else said yes, would that?
It'll make it hard for us to sell it, but I don't think we, your, your participation amount is, is miniscule.
Exactly.
So, the answer's no.
Well, we have been taught by the county, and I'm fairly certain that it's likely we'll be asked to contribute our sales tax in lieu of property, right? And they seem to make that clear.
Say that, no, say that one.
I've never heard that.
Me neither.
I, we would, we would never ask.
I thought it was signed here, but I, I can't.
See, that's what we thought to begin with.
That's, that's right.
See, that, that is a total, that's a, that's a total, that's a total misnomer.
So, Stuart, I've got a question first.
The county doesn't speak, the county doesn't-
Well, it sounds like that's something we should clarify, then, because we have some people who understand it that way and some who don't.
Well, I think it, I think-
County doesn't speak for us.
I think it could be easily clarified in any motion that you decided to make, so you just make it a condition.
But I think that's where maybe something hang up, isn't I, I think that even in the model, I'd have to review Jason's model, but it seemed like he does contribute our sales tax, doesn't he initially?
But, but, but he contributed everything, and, and we're not asking for everything, and so, he, you've got a misconception from Jason's presentation. He gave you the worst scenario and the most aggressive scenario. He gave you giving up everything, and we're not asking you to give up everything. Nobody's, we, we didn't get a chance to comment on Jason's, that we aren't asking, like I mentioned earlier, we aren't, why would you do this project if you gave up your sales tax?
Right.
It doesn't make sense.
No, it didn't touch, I mean, that's, that's what we're saying, it didn't make sense.
And, and so, we're asking for the property tax, and the property tax is generally outside of Hooper. And so, why would you burden the residents of Hooper when you can go outside of Hooper and get help with your sewer lift station, because you have a commercial project that can qualify for a CRA that doesn't affect your tax revenue at all? In fact, it increases your sales tax. And the property tax in, uh, involvement is from the school district, the fire department, the mosquito, wherever it is, and from the county. And so, the entire county gets to participate on your lift station rather than Hooper. If I were a Hooper City resident, I would tell you, I want somebody else to help me with this.
So, when you go negotiate with these other taxing entities, can you request that they stay, I mean, you can request anything, but I'd be comfortable, more comfortable, if they stayed in until it was paid off, because I know a lot of them, like Ryan said, the fire district bails out about seven years, and I could see the school district maybe doing the same.
I don't, I, we wouldn't do it if we didn't have a commitment for it.
For the, for the hotels paid off.
I mean, why, how, how could we do, financially, it would kill us.
Well, that's a question I have.
So, unless, unless, unless the fire department's so small that nobody cares about it, kind of like the, you asked me on Hooper City, but if the school district did that to us, who would pay for that?
We would.
No.
The city would.
No, well, we'd, or the developer would. We, we're not going to do that, okay? That's why, that's why we need this contingent upon a development agreement, because we would have that all defined before we start.
So, that would need to be in writing?
Yeah, with, in writing and assigned.
I'm sure it's in writing though, Ryan, when they come to you, doesn't the fire, isn't it all in writing? Like, the fire district doesn't say, yes, we will, and then a year later say, sorry, we're bailing out. Isn't all in writing?
The percentage is set, the term is set, and if the term happens to be less, then yay for everybody, you know?
Yeah, but it's set, right?
It's until the note or the debt is paid off.
But, but I wouldn't think if the fire department signed a fifteen-year obligation, they could bail at seven, but they may have said, I'm only going to do seven.
Right.
And the city and developer accepted that. And if we accept it, we're going to live with it. But we'll know that upfront. You're not going to get surprises after the fact.
Have the LRB study pulled up here. And I did just want to clarify, so, I have LRB study pulled up here on my computer, but I think Malcolm's going to pull it up. So, on pages thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, you have that, it's where they outline their calculations and assumptions for the, the CRA. And if you look through there, they, it only shows the property tax being included, no sales tax. Um, and it outlines the, yeah, if you want to go to those pages. Yeah, so this diagram here, this is just an example, this is essentially what we were talking through earlier, where the base asset value is what we discussed as being untouched, and then the increase difference is going to be where that money's going to come out to help finance the infrastructure improvement. So, then if you scroll down, Malcolm, but you'll see, by the way, just on that, I'm sorry if you actually go back up real quick. So, on this, you'll see the incremental uplift in property taxable value belongs to tip authority to pay project costs. So, it's only talking about property tax increase here. And then if you scroll down to this model, so this is where they get into the property taxes, and then the, the property tax rates of the different entities that we were just discussing. And then if you scroll down, they essentially use the numbers above the property tax values, multiply it by the taxing rates for each of the entities, and you get these numbers here, which is the total property tax revenues. And they have the total value, and then the MPV, which is discounting the future revenues based on time, right? So, the money far in the future is valued less than money that you get next year.
So, it has a net present value of six million dollars, and we only need two. He, he's saying three and four, but I don't know why we're using three and four unless you're getting numbers. He, he's saying three and four, but I don't know why we're using three and four unless you're getting numbers we don't know.
Yep, and then if you scroll down, so then this is, this outlines the proper tax participation rates. And you'll notice that they, again, did a worst-case scenario, which is assuming that each of the entities is contributing seventy-five percent of the total increase of property taxes that they would receive from the project to the CRA, meaning that they're foregoing seventy-five percent of the new money that would come from the new property tax.
But they're getting twenty-five percent.
And they would retain twenty-five percent. Again, that's a worst-case scenario, we're expecting it to be more like a fifty-fifty split, so they would actually retain more money.
If it's six million dollars, it'll be more fifty-fifty.
Right, yep. And then if you scroll all the way down here, so then this, this is starting to outline, uh, let's see, yeah, sources of funds. This is starting to outline more of the, the, the money that's left over for the, the project and the budget. I think if you scroll up just slightly, so you'll see property tax increment for budget, that's referring to, um, the amount that's left for or given to the development to help fund the cost of the sewer lift station.
That's the amount left after the seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
So if you go fifty, that number, the numbers would be less.
Yes.
It would be.
To the paying back the infrastructure.
Yes.
Yep.
Or, or if the time changes, right?
Yeah.
So those are the variables, the years and, and the percentage.
The school district might say, we don't wanna go twenty years, we don't, we wanna go fifteen, then we gotta, but, you know, we gotta back it. It would maybe at seventy-five percent for fifteen years or ten years, or fifty percent for twenty years.
Yep, and the, the number I think that's the most important is really that, that total number of the six million. That exceeds the cost of the sewer lift station itself, uh, by at least, I think.
By at least double.
That's over how much time?
I believe.
Twenty-five years.
I think it's probably, yeah, I'll have to double check what there's.
It said, I think at the top, it said twenty-five years.
Said twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Go back up.
And, and again, that's a point of negotiation that can be altered, right? But, um, yeah. Yeah, so essentially, what, part of what I'm trying to highlight is the, if we're only talking property tax. It's enough to fund the, the sewer lift station improvements that are required, only looking at just property tax.
So on that, does he have an estimate of sales tax revenue in there?
There, there is, yeah, I believe they have an estimate of sales tax revenue. And by the way, I think, in our opinion, they've understated, again, thinking worst-case scenario. I think they've understated it pretty significantly.
I have the actual in Keysville, so if you wanna see it.
Yeah, but we understand, especially for your sake, that you wanna look at a worst-case scenario. Um, but from what I was reading and understanding of their study, they were not including sales tax participation in terms of funding the infrastructure improvements. I could be wrong, but when I've checked and just looking through this summary here, it looks like they're only focused on property tax. And, and even if they are accounting for sales tax participation, just looking at the property tax calculations, again, it's, it's enough to cover the costs uh, that we're looking to have participation on.
That would be nice to clarify that, cause that, that makes a huge difference.
Yeah.
If you're not taking any sales tax.
Yeah.
We, I can tell you, any of the projects that I've been involved with, we've never asked for sales tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was shocked when you started talking about your, your utility fee taxes and your sales tax. I thought, what the heck are they thinking?
Well, it's in there somewhere.
That's why.
I, I know it is, but, but Jason doesn't work for us.
So, so I think, I think.
He works, he works for you.
And, so and actually on page thirty in that first paragraph, Malcolm, if you go back to that, I think this is where some of this confusion is coming from. There's a line maybe halfway through that first paragraph on page thirty, it starts with the CRA also serves, right there. So it says the CRA also serves as a public finance tool to divert portions of new ta, of new incremental taxes, parentheses, property tax, sales tax, or other, right? To the agencies for purposes of incentivizing, encouraging, it goes on. So I think, and I think really what that's saying is, that's just one lever you can pull, but it's an optional lever. It's saying you could roll sales tax into that script.
We definitely have been told though in the past that they thought we would have to, and that we're not saying we need to. And if you guys are in agreeance, that's great, we'd obviously like not to. But how does that get determined and when does it get determined, right? When do we know if sales tax is gonna be required or not?
Before you give us our final rezone. It's gonna be subject to a development agreement, and if you don't like the terms of the development agreement, we don't get our rezone.
Yeah.
But we have to go solve these problems and try to solve the problems and give you answers. But if we don't have, if we aren't told to, we can't go do it.
Yeah, just to clarify, we, our assumption was there was no participation from the sales tax side of things. We had, we have only ever been looking at the property tax side of things. And so if there was some confusion there, apologies about that, but from our perspective, we had only ever planned on the property tax. And that, again, that, even according to LRB's study, which is a worst-case scenario, that is sufficient to cover the cost of the, the sewer lift station.
And we've only planned on part of the property tax.
Right, yep.
So we need to clarify with Jason.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to call him, but he's not returning my calls, probably because he works for you.
So does that help, and I, I can see where, especially with some of the wording in the LRB report and the, the calculations in the model that they did.
It's not, it's not from LRB that I got it, it's from the county, Weaver County mentioned in both their presentations that likely, that, that agencies generally like to see you contribute your sales tax. That's where my understanding of the game, but it's not saying it needs to be.
I've, I've, I've been in, uh, I used to be a RDA, uh, director for a small city. I've never seen the cities participating with their sales tax. That's not to say they don't do it. Um, it, it would be highly unique, um, in the state, the way, uh, CRAs have been run. Um, I'm sure there's some that have done it, but it's not commonplace, yeah.
Well, that'd be, that'd be a big difference in, kind of, what our thoughts have been.
And, and I would say that sales tax have always been, uh, kinda.
Yeah, it's for Keysville's.
Sanctified, so to speak, they, they've been off, off limits for projects.
The bottom shows the average, but that's every year.
Can you read that?
I can't read that.
Let me do it. So they give me, they give me a, uh, well, it should open here. A monthly?
There you go, now you can zoom in.
And this is sales tax, right?
There you go.
This is sales tax, there you go, they give me a monthly, so you can see it monthly here, seven, eight, but it's all data. So it's, it starts in July of twenty-one. And ends in May of twenty-four. And they give me a comparison to the Associated Food Stores. Point of sale, okay, which is half. Uh, on the average for Smiths was two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-five point seven-nine. For the Associated Food Store, it was eighty-seven thousand. Uh, the population that they got, because they, they have a different population than Hooper. They got twenty-nine thousand population additional, because they're probably getting a lot of it anyway. And eight thousand for the Associated Food Store. The three-year average, because it's, uh, increased, is three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand a year. And ninety-six for the Associated Food Store. That's their sales tax. And it probably includes the Jimmy John's and the other stuff with it, but that's still a good number. So when I hear these numbers that you're talking about in the LRB, I'm saying, what, maybe? But here's an actual number and.
Are there any other questions on the CRA, hopefully that helped clear up some of those there?
I think, is Jason, is that who did this?
Yeah.
I'd just like some clarification for him if he.
He may call me, he just text me and said, I'll call you in a while, but I hope he calls me during this meeting.
If sales tax was not included in this study, I mean, that makes a big difference.
Yeah.
I wouldn't do it if we took your sales tax. I wouldn't do it if I were you, okay? And I can understand why you'd be hesitant, so.
And, and.
Why, why, if you don't get any revenue.
Right.
Well, that's how.
That's kind of, that's why we were hung up on it.
And I would just say, uh, the, the tax increment financing is a fairly complicated. Um, to, to understand the concepts is, it's different. It's unique, it's different, it's very creative, candidly. Um, but it's working all over the state, uh, in other communities. They're taking, uh, taking these opportunities and making them work for their community. And it's an opportunity to get reinvestment in your community where otherwise you wouldn't.
And, and I'm personally opposed to CRAs or RDAs for normal development costs. Curb and gutter, sidewalk, things are, what CRAs were made for and that they were designed for was when you have a big thing like a sewer lift station, or a big thing like a sewer line extension, or a water line extension, or a water tank, or something that you gotta build that you can't build in the project, it goes way beyond the project. The CRA comes in, builds, it helps build it, and disperse that tax revenue over the entire taxing area. And it actually helps the residents of that community and allows them to, to have, have infrastructure that they would never have had. And it helps all the taxing entities, cause they get, they get additional tax revenue that they wouldn't have had. Because without the water tank or without the lift station, the project wouldn't have happened. So this is a classic, this is what CRAs were meant to do. And in the commercial areas, that's the only place you can use them, so you have an opportunity, cause it's a commercial area, and you have a sewer lift station that's needed.
And it may be helpful to highlight just off of what Stuart's saying, so Malcolm, on that same LRB report on page five, this is part of the summary of their findings. So on page five is where they specifically talk about the CRA and their findings and kind of recommendation on that. Uh, there's a, a few different paragraphs there, but. Yeah, go to the page, let's see, if you scroll. Up actually, let's see, make sure I'm on the right page. Oh, sorry, scroll down, yeah. Yeah, so essentially here, so both, there's kind of point two, which is kind of their overall summary, and then items A and B and C kinda dive into some of the details a little bit further. So kinda near the end of A here, it says, uh, LRB says, quote, "We are of the opinion that the extraordinary cost of the sewer lift station requires a, a form of public participation." So essentially reflecting what Stuart's saying is, there's kind of this extraordinary cost of the sewer lift station, which is above and beyond what a normal development like this would be able to bear in terms of costs. And, and they think it would be a good idea to have some form of public participation.
Well, they actually said requires.
Yep, and then, but if you kind of then go back up to, to point number two, where it summarizes kind of their overall opinion. If you look at the last sentence, it says, "Even with the inclusion of tax increment, a diversion as a cost of the development," essentially talking about the CRA. "There is still a net fiscal, a net fiscal benefit of the development as further detailed and presented here." And so essentially what they're saying, unless anybody feels like they're saying something else, is, hey, because of the extraordinary, extraordinary cost of the sewer lift station, some form of participation from these entities is needed. And even after running the calculations and modeling this, in a worst-case scenario, we still see that this project has a net benefit to the city, to the county, to the state, even with a worst-case scenario participation on the CRA. So essentially kind of saying, hey, even in the worst of circumstances, this is a good thing. And, and they're recommending that this is the route that is considered, so. So I think in a lot of ways, we, we agree with that, and that's where we've come from, is, you know, hey, we, we wanna make this work. We, we feel like, just like LRB is stating, that this is gonna be a net benefit, um, even in a worst-case scenario, and that we can make this work.
This has been very helpful to clarify the sales tax. I, that, that would have been a real, I can understand where you're coming from now. I wasn't sure earlier, but now I can understand it.
You understand the logic, obviously, though, too, why the county would have fed us that. They're saying, why would these other entities say, you know, we're gonna give, give you our property tax, you're not gonna contribute any. And we're gonna pay for the infrastructure for your city, right?
Well, give us a shot at it.
I think that was the logic, right? I don't think it's a completely left field, illogical comment, I think they're tracing some logic. I'm not saying it's gonna be the way it is, I hope it's not, but I think that's the idea.
Well, give us a shot, and we know where you're at, but we need to go talk to them and actually get the facts.
For sure, yeah, and I, I'm good with that, that makes a lot of sense.
Well, and on that front, like again, we, we've seen this as, you know, hey, we wanna work together and we wanna be your ally in that discussion, right? Essentially go to them and say, hey, you know, this is for the benefit of the project and for the city, this is how we need this to, to work. And we, we hope that's where we're working together to, to ensure that that can happen in, in a way that makes sense, right?
Are you guys good on CRAs, or you want to end at six-thirty, is that what you said?
No, we have to seven.
Oh, you're gonna take it all the way, good.
Yeah.
Great, team, I just before, I was hoping you guys could let, uh, last time it didn't seem like the way we brought it to you for consideration work. I just wanted to get an opinion on that, how we want to fill the application moving forward. And that, to clarify, that was long in the works, it came long before, you know, we ever received the application. The rezone request was quite a while ago, and then it went to planning commission since I've been here, and that's, we followed that route. We interjected that idea of maybe making it contingent, right? Or making it, and that was a REIT's recommendation that maybe we make it, you know, dependent or conditional upon something, but we can process it however you want. I just wanna make sure it comes back to you the way you wanna see it. So that it's more actionable potentially, plus I don't feel very actionable.
I think the thing that bothers me about the LRB study all along, and this has nothing to do with the CRA. But you look at the, you look at the numbers out there, you know, Hooper City, three-point-eight-three-three million dollars. Well, that's a great number, but then you think, oh, that's over twenty-five years. You divide that by twenty-five, and you get a hundred-and-fifty thousand a year. With three-point-eight-three-three million dollars, you make a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand a year on this monstrosity of project.
This was never part of it, but even this other utility tax that we have in place that is based on the, the use of electricity and gas. Stores, schools, you know, all that pays in that, so that would still, that's something we'd never.
We pay our fair share of that, whatever the bill is.
But that's, all that's included in that number right there.
It, it would be, you're saying, yeah.
Utility, property, and sales taxes, all that.
We, we couldn't figure out, we see numbers from competing stores, and the mayor talked about, it wasn't just Hooper, not about Keysville, it was West Point. You've got numbers from, and, and also far west that don't, that make that number not make sense.
Yeah, and this, this, I mean, this may or may not be helpful, but, you know, kinda back to what we talked about earlier, that LRB prepared this as an absolute cataclysmic worst-case scenario. Which is, again, is, I think is totally fair and is helpful for you to, to view it in that way, right? Um, and so I think that, that you see that number and that's a fair concern, right? Keep in mind that it's a worst-case scenario. And I think part of what Stuart's saying and, and what, what we're saying is that, uh, you know, at a minimum, we just talked about the property tax being, if we take it from the worst-case scenario down to more of what we're expecting, that's a twenty-five percent increase in property tax, which is coming back to the city. But honestly, that's a pretty small lever in comparison to the sales tax. And the sales tax component of it, we think is significantly understated in the LRB study. Again, looking at it as a worst-case scenario, I think that's fair. But in a more realistic scenario, I think that's understated by, you know, a factor of one and a half to two. I mean, it's, it's pretty understated. Um, and that may or may not help, but I think that's, you know, when looking at that, I think that's helpful to keep in mind, that it is a worst-case, absolute worst-case scenario.
I think where we get in the weeds a little bit too is, we're talking about revenues, you know, you say West Point and, uh, Keysville and all these figures from here. That's pure revenue, that's not net, you know, that's, that's gross revenue, is what those numbers you share with us. Up here, we're talking net numbers, after all of our costs are taken out of that revenue. You know, it'd be, and that, and that's, that's hard to figure out when you're talking about a Keysville and a West Point. You know, what, what are their costs after this gross revenue? What's, what's their net? That'd be fun to find out, but, and that's supposedly what that number is up there, is what our net is after all of our costs.
And I'd like to know what's fixed and what's variable. In other words, if you're already paying for the sheriff to come, and that's a fixed cost that you're paying for, does this contribute to that? So it actually reduces that fixed cost? Or is it a variable cost that you gotta hire another sheriff? And is it an increased cost? And so those are, but I think, uh, anyway.
I, when Jason called you back, I, that three-point-eight Ryan was talking about, I just wanna clarify, does that include sales tax and the ten percent? You know, if that's taken out the ten percent administrative fee that our city would have.
And utility tax.
And utility tax, so I guess we need some clarification on that, where Hooper City, the six-point-eight and three-point-eight. What actually is the component of those two numbers? what actually is the component of those two numbers?
So, and I, I thought the study kind of dove into those numbers a little bit more deeper and further, further pages down, because that was just kind of a summary, at the first of the report, and then further in the report, there's actual more detailed figures.
So, what, what we would like the opportunity to do, if we can, is we would like to have the opportunity to go try to work on, uh, CRA and see if we can't get the ability, at least a, a basis to be able to try to fund the lift station. And if we're not successful, then we'll come back and report that, okay? Keep you apprised all the way through. And we would like, you know, the, the PRUD, or whatever it's called, or the PUD.
PUD.
There's, there's questions about it. We'd like an opportunity to actually site plan that, so we're not talking in generalities, that we get more specific with you, so you can see what we would do. Uh, we agreed a long time ago not to build townhomes, and somehow that's been rumored around the city, that they were building townhomes. You know, if you want us to build townhomes, we'll do it, okay? But we'd like to actually start site planning that, so you can see what we're talking about, and... And I, I think there's a real opportunity to try to do some affordable housing there. If you don't want it, that's fine, we can do some retirement housing. We could do a combination of both, but right now, we're talking in generalities, and we'd like to be able to come back to you as part of that development agreement, and get more specific, so we just aren't making a motion that, that binds us when we can't, we can't show you what we're doing, okay? And if you don't like it, you can say you don't like it, but if you do, we can finesse it to make sure it fits what you're thinking. But we'd like that opportunity, we think that can happen in a development agreement. Uh, because if you don't like it, you don't approve the development agreement.
Well, that was another part of our discussion, was the type of housing, you know. Uh, maybe we oughta shift to that in the time we have.
Gives that flexibility to come back to you.
So I know, I think why the planning commission went to fifty-five and older PUD is, there's really no guidance in our ordinance for infrastructure, where a PUD does say that the developer builds and provides all the infrastructure, so there were all of that. So that's, that could, so that's a hurdle right there. I think we've got an ordinance that wouldn't match the PUD development, because...
And, and that would be addressed in that development agreement.
Right.
And that PUD also allows, in the ordinance, forty percent for open spaces.
Which counts as grass, that's part of their yards. That was, we've gone through and down to that, that includes their yards, so it's not just employee...
Let us get us, get you something, and you can tweak it, say this doesn't work, or it does work. But let's, let's be more specific at it, so we both know what we're doing, and we know what we're getting, and you know what you're getting. So I think that would, we, I'd like, I'd like to be able to do that if we can, don't you think? So, so we're not, we're not thinking it's townhomes when it's patio homes, we're not thinking it's patio homes when it's retirement or whatever else. We just, we come in with some ideas of what we're doing.
I know Debbie, you had mentioned like the third on the one side, the half on the other, other city council members, how do you feel about that?
That could be decided, that could be given in a moment.
Okay, so anyone's agreeable with that? Third on the west, half on the north, okay? Okay? Then what are you thinking as far as the PUD and the center?
I think within the PUD, it should be nice, within that open space allowance, to provide, uh, just a concept of a public place, where not just the residents could use, but the entire city could use, you know. Go to a, go to, uh, a place to get something to eat, and then go over to a park and sit and would, do whatever, you know, a little park for the kids.
Just not hidden within the homes and...
You know, bouquets, whatever, just, just an open space area that would allow, um, people to go to and enjoy the, the space, rather than just specific people limited to the people that live there.
Let us try to design something, so...
I still want ice cream.
What do you want?
Ice cream.
We did, we did a handles in Leighton, you like handles?
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 Ice cream.
Ice cream.
I'm talking about a reeck, not a hockey ball.
I thought you said ice cream.
I agree with you, if someone's going to go there and get some food, it would be nice, when it's nice weather, that they would have like a pavilion or something, they could go sit under and eat with their family.
Or a swing set or something.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be nice. What kind of housing are you thinking in that?
I think we talked about patio homes, didn't we? And the planning commission recommended that.
But all patio homes? Not any moderate income housing, not any starter homes?
What does that look like?
You know, a starter home in today's market is a four hundred thousand, but some cities are actually passing, so it is not required to have a garage, you know. We here in Hooper have required garages, certain size lots. This, a starter home could be, or a moderate income housing, it could qualify if it was a smaller lot with not requiring them to have a garage. I don't know, I'm just throwing out some ideas.
There's lots of builders out there that are doing that, and every, every builder has something. Nelson Homes, I think, has some, Ivory has some. But we could, we could bring some plans in and show you, and see what you think of them.
Patio homes can be for a starter home as well, doesn't necessarily have to be only a retirement, too. That's another option. If you had patio homes, and some were retirement, and some...
Starter.
Yes, not fifty-five and older.
Talked to some people in retirement centers, and they say all they do is go to funerals. And, uh...
To the funeral home.
And they, they, they kinda like the...
They like to have the children.
They like, they like, they like the mix-up of the community a little bit, it brings some life into their life.
Yeah, they do.
Well, that's one thing about the patio zone, I think we have our ordinance, Malcolm, you've maybe looked at that, we've got, we've got more definition there in what's required in that type of zoning than we do some of the others. It's a little more defined.
And we could define it even more than your ordinance in a development agreement. That's the thing with the development agreement, you can define it really, really precise. But, and we could, and we may want some legal room, but we could also define it precisely, depending what we're doing, depending how far along we get in the process. Okay?
One question, if we direct them to our patio home ordinance, I don't know if you guys like this, but just have an elephant to address, so I wanna make sure we don't go too far, if you guys like this or not. Well, it is detached, detached, and once I do another glowing, use our only patio home built up, and we've done the detached, right? This talks a little bit about the potential of sharing a wall. I don't know if that's a little, I don't know.
Is that how those ones are built, or... Or not?
Uh-huh, they're all separate.
They're all separate, so why...
That's kinda high, but you know, but I don't, I'm just saying, if we direct them here, I just heard they're gonna read.
Cause I can think.
We'd build that probably.
We saw some fourplex plans built, and the patio home fourplexes in the city, and we've seen some separated four, patio homes. But that's why I say, I think it's better for us to bring you in a plan, then you know what you're getting, and you don't give us a zone and get surprised as we walked in. Does that make sense? I think we, we'd be better off to give you some type of more detailed design.
I don't know how many of you, I've mentioned before, the Green Farms subdivision that's in West Haven, and one new thing they've done up there is they are a patio home, but they're actually a fourplex patio home. And I've spoken to a few of their residents that live there, and they say the seniors are actually liking them a little better than even the patio home. But they are connected, and then you have the back part, so they drive in, and it gives a little more secluded place for their parking, for their cars. Again, I don't, I'm not saying that's, I'm for against that, that's just something that they're doing with patio homes as well.
But that'd be part of the approval process later on.
They have some of those over in, uh, Siri, accused by the Smiths as well, they're a thing to the south of that. But there are fourplex within garages.
Yeah, but they don't really look like a traditional fourplex that I thought of, because the back two were hidden behind, so they drive, but then it looked to me like all the garages were behind, like either the front.
So it looks like a big house, but it's four, more of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they, they looked really nice, I thought they looked really nice, too.
That's the one Brad, yeah, Brad Hughes was proposing over here at the time. Did you go on the tour with him?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, he took me on the tour. But he, his original idea, fifty-five plus, was gonna be over here on four thousand.
What'd you think?
Decent on housing, I thought, housing was great for that age group, you know.
But again, that retirement home.
Well, one thing, you know, this is certainly further on in the development agreement, when we do that, but even when I saw the one in St. George, that was really nice, and I think I mentioned this, is they had on the one side were golf carts where they parked. And one thing we talked about, you know, maybe even making some of the sidewalks a little wider, that if there are people that are in the patio homes, that are the fifty-five and older, they're trying to come to Smiths to perhaps get their prescriptions, or even for shopping, they had a little wider place to come, and that was really nice, where they could park their golf carts on the side. You know, and you'll get the people that have their golf carts out here wanting to drive theirs up there.
So to, to give you, I'm just thinking through my mind, to give you a little, my thought pattern. If we had a contingency zone, we would probably go to work on the CRA first and find out if the taxing entities would come with us. And if they will, then we'd go to work on the residential, and give you a plan for the residential. To start with the residential would be kind of, uh, getting the horse in front of the cart, because we don't even know we have the commercial. So we'd probably go in that order, so at least you're seeing what's in the back. If you want us to do something else, that's at least my thought, is we'd go to work on the CRA, and then we'd go to work on the residential if we had, uh, what we thought we could move ahead on.
We also have that sewer line that I've mentioned along fifty-one hundred that we need to replace that.
That could be part of the CRA.
That could be part of the CRA, and I've spoken with River County about trying to get some funding, and they mentioned it could be part of the CRA, because it, that pipe is going to have to be in place before we hook Smiths.
Oversized water lines, oversized sewer lines, lift stations, those are all things the CRA is meant for.
Which would help us out, because if not, the city's just going to have to, and it's probably going to be four or five hundred thousand, because that's got to be done. Whether we do Smiths or not, that's something that we are going to have to do, and if we do Smiths, for sure, we have to.
Hey, how much time do we have? This is Jason.
Twenty minutes.
Sure.
Jason, you there? I'm, I'm sitting in a work meeting with, you're on, and it's a public work meeting, so it's on, uh, a public meeting, but I'm here with the Hooper City Council, and they've got a few questions for you, can you answer those? Maybe, I don't know if you can, but will you answer them? Will you try?
Well, I'll, I'll attempt to, I will, I'll do my best, and certainly attempt to answer the questions.
Go ahead.
So, Jason, I have a question on, uh, what page is that? Page four?
Five.
It's on page five. On page five, no, it's four, excuse me, at the very top. Uh, in that first table, it says, Hooper, Hooper City, total six point eight million, and NPV at four percent, three point eight. Those figures, are you including sales tax in any of those figures? Or is that just...
Yeah, let me, let me just make sure I'm on the same, let me pull it up, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I think they wanted to know if their utility fee tax, if all their taxes were included in that, if it's sales tax or property tax, or what is it?
Right. So I've, I've got it up, can, sorry, with that, could you, um, direct me again to the table you're referring to? I just wanna make sure I've got it all in front of me.
Table, table E point two, and it's on page five.
Okay, I got it, I got it now.
Page four, sorry, page four.
Okay. Um, yeah, so with respect to the tables on page four, so there is a table E point two, which, um, I think you referenced, is the overall fiscal impact, and this is the cost of services and tax increment diversion. So this assumes, um, all of those, as you can see noted in a footnote below, which is the cost of services and government expenses. So for each entity, it's different. Uh, for Hooper City, it includes, um, the general governmental expenses, so it would be public safety, including any contracted services that you receive from county, or, uh, or, or local district, special district, et cetera. It also include public works, um, roads, snow removal, um, community and economic development, planning, zoning, uh, et cetera. That would be created by, uh, this development. Um, it would be the costs associated with that. Included in that, as it notes there, is also the idea that there would be tax increment, assuming that a CRA was created, and a portion of the city's property tax, not sales tax, just property tax, was, uh, remitted to, um, to an agency, or to the agency, to cover the cost of the sewer, um, the sewer project, the sewer, um, pump station, or I think it was a pump station that we were looking at.
Does it include the utility fees? Did you use that, or do you just use sales tax and property tax?
No, it's just the general government expenses, and again, table E point two is the cost, so if you think of it as a, you know, financial kind of statement, um, E two shows us what is anticipated the costs of the project, whereas on page three, on table E one, that's the fiscal impact or benefit, so that's the revenue side. And just to be clear again, it doesn't include utilities, so it doesn't include what is paid for sewer or water, um, but it would include revenues... Sorry.
Or electricity.
Yeah, or electricity, any, any utility, or, or anything that would be covered in an enterprise fund, or isn't operated, or, in, in this case, not operated by the city, if they don't, you have, I don't believe Hooper, does Hooper have its own electric utility?
No, no.
No, but I think they do, uh, uh...
Franchise, I think.
Franchise, yeah. So, but it doesn't, doesn't include the front tax?
It does include, sorry, um, so if I could, just real quick, if you scrolled down to, section, yeah, probably a better place is the appendices, um, under the... See if I've got that. If you go to page, excuse me, page forty of the document, and it's a rather elongated, large, um, spreadsheet page, the total city revenues and total city expenses for the governmental services is broken out there. And you can see that it includes property tax, sales tax, and then the other taxes that are noted there does include the municipal energy tax that the city collects off of natural gas and/or electricity. This project generates approximately, we believe it'll generate approximately thirty thousand dollars a year in those two tax categories.
Your cost, does it have incremental costs, or are they some of the existing fixed costs in the city?
It has a combination of both, so both of the, um, page thirty-eight, again, probably play, provides a little more detail on that, and those assumptions are included there. So, uh, where you see a, a fixed versus variable ratio, um, that's based on a, on a database that we've used, that's developed all over across the inner mountain west, so it would have governments from New Mexico... it would have governments from New Mexico all the way up to actually the Northwest, because we have Oregon included in there. Um, but it's weighted heavily towards Utah local government, um, so municipalities, towns. And so each of those, where it says fixed versus variable ratio, is um, a percentage that comes from our database relative to each of those specific types of general government services. So.
Is the forty, is the forty percent fixed or variable?
It's the, it's the fixed component of it, the rest of it's variable.
So, so could I say that forty percent of the costs are additional revenue to the city to pay for costs they're already paying for?
Yes, another way to say that is, yeah, forty percent of
That three million.
The cost that, yeah, I guess, I guess the better way to say it is forty percent of the costs that we've estimated on page thirty, excuse me, forty. So if you go back to forty, where you see the expenditure for the costs for the city, which there include the tax increment, public safety, public works, et cetera. Forty percent of the costs are fixed based on um, either per assessed value per population or a combination of both, whereas sixty percent are variable and proportionate to that. So for every one dollar of assessed value, if it's a fixed component, then it adds the proportional one dollar of expense to it, whereas if it's variable, it's only treated at a portion of that. So it it's really expressing the economies of scale that some of these will be fixed costs and some of them will be variable costs. So forty percent would be what we anticipate to be fixed costs, meaning for each dollar of assessed value and each um, uh, additional resident or population that would add, they would have dollar for dollar the costs that are existing within the community right now. Whereas the opposite of that would be variable costs, which would be borne by, uh, at a lower level, but it would be borne uh, more directly related to that development. This is including a hundred percent of what we think the costs are gonna be um, in the equation, so we're not taking just the incremental costs, we're taking basically the full cost, assuming some of them are fixed and some of them are variable. I'm not sure if I explained that very well. I I guess the best way to maybe articulate that, um, maybe to re re kind of program that into our minds is how much do the residential and the commercial elements of this project, how much incremental cost do they add to the city of Hooper? And that's what that line shows. Um, you know, it starts about eleven thousand and grows to just over two hundred sixty, seventy thousand, and it kind of just grows from inflation from there. But that is based on a methodology that's, part of it is fixed cost, part of it's variable cost.
Other questions?
Yeah, can you, Jason, can you explain those last two columns on page forty? Um, the blue ones were net fiscal benefit and I'll, well, they're both next, net fiscal benefit. Can you explain what that means?
Yeah, so the last two columns, um, well, let me describe it a couple of ways. So the the last two columns, oh, I see, the last two columns and the last two, are you talking about the last two rows?
Last two rows, I'm sorry, last two rows.
Okay, sorry, okay. Yeah, so the last two columns are, um, one is, so the top line is the net fiscal benefit, so what you would look to get the the math of that first period, you'd look at, it's a negative sixty-five thousand seven thirty-three. That's because we have uh, some, have residential development kind of um, front, front end loaded in terms of the development, which consumes more public services than the commercial side of it. So the total expenses in that, say, year one, are ninety uh, two thousand dollars total for um, for the combination of the city, the county, and the state of Utah. Whereas if you look up above, the total revenues is twenty-six thousand nine oh three. Do you see that? Um, about halfway down, it includes the city, county, state, and other revenues. So there's twenty-six thousand nine oh three coming in. There's an outflow of um, ninety-two thousand six thirty-six, and that's where you get the the net fiscal benefit aggregated across all of those at the negative sixty-five. And so you you have that for a couple of years before the commercial development is fully, not fully absorbed, but most of the of the, for instance, the neighborhood marketplace is absorbed, and then you can start seeing the significant um, revenue over expenses than it does, than it does generate. So I think we made a point of this in the council meeting that, you know, early on, um, and this is really a probably a a strong indicator of, you know, why, what we typically say because of, you know, property tax and the primary um, owner exemption on property tax values at the fifty-five percent and uh, point of sale versus, you know, the number of you know, population components that distribute sales tax and recognizing you don't have much of a property tax. Um, you can see that residential, uh, clearly it demonstrates right there residential is costing you because you you don't have really a revenue source that's offsetting that. But when you get to commercial, the significance of the sales tax and to an extent, the municipal tack, energy tax, et cetera, and some of the property tax is what really offset that.
So that's the case with any residential in the city, though?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's really a reflection of what is, in essence, happening right now without any uh, commercial uh, tax base. Now, there is some commercial tax base that Hooper does have, but if it's just standalone and there's only residential, that that's what we would find with any any of your residential property right now. Did that, did that answer that? Was was that?
Any other questions for Jason while we have him? Anybody else, any other questions?
Jason, thank you.
Yes, thanks for calling in. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and if you have any other questions, don't hesitate to reach out or feel free to send me an email or something, but um, wanna help uh, how we can, so.
Just clarify again, the CRA, you only use property tax, no, no other tax in the CRA, correct?
Correct. I think that's reflected, just to confirm that, it's uh, reflected in our just wanna make sure I reflect that in the yes, I think the best, the 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 answer is yes, we've only used property tax, and it's best reflected again on that same page forty. Which on the expense side shows the CRA tax increment, and you can see each of the city, county, and then other taxing entities broken out there, but um, it's only property tax, no sales tax or other tax revenue.
Thanks. Appreciate you, Jason. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys. All right, bye.
This is just a random question, but what's the percentage of Hooper City sales tax that we collect on selling a Twinkie?
Across the state?
No, Hooper City, what do we collect? One point two five percent?
That's close, I think.
I don't know what our sales.
If it's sold in Hooper point of sale.
Sales, sales tax, seven point two five.
Kami might know.
Kami. I don't know, I don't know what Hooper City's sales tax.
Point of sale tax.
What your point of sale tax, I have to look at it and see what rate it is, but so it's, let me look for it.
Point and a half or one and a half.
So from, I have the
Seven point six does not all come to Hooper.
Yeah, so I I have the, um, I know you can't see this, but, and I can share this with you, but I have the twenty twenty-four um, report from the state, and it says that the local sales tax um, is one percent.
One percent.
I would, I would agree to that, though.
So, so those numbers down on the bottom, like row, or year number, there at the bottom are benefit. Year four, where we're making one million seventy-three thousand two forty-three. Do you realize how many, how much sales that is on one percent of sales? It's over a hundred million dollars.
The user, the user, our brain won't come if they don't have that type of volume.
This this thing's gonna generate over a hundred million dollars a year? I mean, that's just my brain thinking, right? To me, that is just so out of left field.
In our area, we don't think that much.
I just don't see that happening. Sorry.
Like you said, they won't come if they.
I think the study is so based on what ifs. Or we said a worst case scenario, but I'm thinking best case scenario and so many aspects. But that's just me thinking.
So we only have a couple of minutes left, so where do we want them to go from here then? Are they, are we okay with them to go ahead and start working on, seeing what the entities are as far as the CRA?
Well, Stu, you said something, you said, uh, you talked about going to get to work on a CRA, you talked about some site plan and PP, but then later you said, uh, if we can get conditional approval, do we need conditional approval for you to start doing that, or are you gonna start doing that either way?
I think we need conditional approval, but we don't wanna get out, we we can't represent Hooper if we can't represent Hooper. If we don't, if we don't have a conditional approval, we don't, we don't have anything to talk about.
We tried to get conditional, you know, approval and it didn't. I mean, we were all there, so whatever you guys want, I mean, that's where we're at.
I personally hate going against the planning commission and their recommendations. They're the ones that we depend on, and um, they gave us some recommendations, and I hate, I hate not taking them into consideration.
Three out of seven. Who gave us the recommendation?
Three out of seven. Oh, and always unanimous.
How many were, how many were present?
Uh, four.
Four, four out of seven. We had a quarter.
I think there were at least five, wasn't there?
I'm not so sure it goes against the planning commission's recommendation, though, right? I mean, they they recommend even approval with those conditions. We would just be asking a conditional condition that they successfully create a developers agreement that entails all this, but we don't need to go that hard if you guys don't want, I just don't wanna send them to you again. If you do that, I don't wanna do that song and dance again unless you guys want it. So I think what may be helpful is to to simplify it, at least this is just my thought, but like, so I think we're totally open to it being conditional on the development agreement, and the development agreement kind of acts as that umbrella where you really stay in the driver's seat and you can still continue to have the discussions that we were having earlier, right, about, you know, hey, what do we want the residential components to look like? Like, we really want to get to those conversations and continue those and figure those out, and that would be normally part of a development agreement. Right? And and so conditional on the development agreement would kind of simplify the whole process and then still keep you in the driver's seat, and then we, but it would allow the project to move forward and progress. So I think that's where, that makes a lot of sense, and we wanna continue to have these conversations and figure out what's gonna work and what's not, uh, but also just kind of simplify things. That seemed to make sense from my perspective, but I think we're open to thoughts on what you think makes sense.
So given we only have a couple of minutes, so where where do we, what direction do we go from here then?
So I'll just speak up. The the bottom two rows concern me, you know, I'll be quite honest. I mean, we're going in the hole, I don't know, half a inch box, maybe. Um, and that's with the taxing entities participating at seventy-five percent. I would, I would like to see if you can actually get the taxing entities to sign up for the whole term and tell, tell that CRA, and go for it if you can do it. I mean, at some point, we have to to make a decision, um, what's best for the city. I know, I know people, whatever decide, people are gonna not be happy. But it's gotta be a financial, for me, it's gotta benefit the city. Really good financially because it's gonna change our community forever, and it is. I don't, I, I don't think you can do it as far as getting them to sign up. I don't know.
Fifty percent, you probably will.
Fifty for twenty-five years?
Is the city running a net positive already on their budget?
Yes.
Barely, yeah.
So, so, uh, we we'd like that opportunity, and we don't know either, but we think we'd come back with that and then some definitions on the PUD. And so we could reflect at least the planning commission's thoughts and your thoughts. If you give us that opportunity. I'm with you, I don't know.
I voice my concerns. I I think the study is not what it is. I mean, that's a lot of money to come up with that figure as far as sales goes. You know, and then our portion, I already voiced this concern, is we only get a hundred seventy-three thousand net a year for twenty-five years. I mean, is it worth that to the city for only a hundred seventy-three thousand a year? I don't, I don't think it is, in my opinion.
So do you guys want us to send it back for a conditional reason, or do you want them to go do some work on some site plan developing and uh, P, or uh, CRA? You know, develop, or discussions, I don't know what makes the most sense, like.
Well, if we have the CRA and we have the answers from that, send that a little bit.
You get a sewer.
Can't answer as in commitments from these other taxing entities.
Does that?
I mean, that would help.
That helps us. But the numbers may.
Can you make, can you do a conditional reason subject to a development agreement, so we can go do that?
You're gonna get approval if you do fifty percent, I guarantee you.
But that shows seventy-five.
Right. But they've been talking about fifty, but if they go.
Then those numbers go up.
In the time, it goes up, exactly.
So Ryan's saying the hundred and seventy-five is our
Net.
Net, but that didn't include sales tax from what we were just told, from my understanding. I guess we should ask them that.
Sounds like we need time to clarify it, that's what, uh, developed.
Well, that's, that's what that whole thing was, was sales tax. Right?
The hundred and seventy-five.
The the income, the income was sales tax, property tax and utility tax. It was all of them. Minus expenses, is there?
Well, but forty percent of your expenses are fixed costs, meaning you don't hire, you don't hire another planner. You have a planner on staff, forty percent of it covers the existing planner. That's a fixed cost. Variable cost would be hiring a new sheriff, because that's an additional cost. So you get forty percent of those costs back in that cover your existing costs. Does that make sense? So that's benefit the city, plus you get a lift station, plus you get some annual revenue. So that's, you gotta decide, but we're at a point where we need to decide if we stay in it or not, so we probably need direction.
Okay, we need to start our other meeting council, so give them some direction. Well, okay, okay, so if they go and try to do the CRA and it doesn't work, and they come back and tell us it doesn't work, then we have other decisions to make. I don't see what the harm would be for them going to see if they can. Because we're not out anything. If they go and it doesn't, then they come back, they present it to us again and say, we can't get it, now what do we want to do? But if we don't even give them.
Or we can get it, but it's this this level, that's not enough.
So we don't know what the numbers are gonna look like if they go for fifty percent, you know, how many years is that gonna be? How much money is that gonna be? We don't have any data on that, for fifty percent, we got data on seventy-five percent.
We just know it would be better.
Or the taxing entity's gonna go for seventy-five, I have no idea.
Yeah.
That's a hard sell a lot of times.
We'll give a shot.
So do we have to try it and then-
We'd like a shot if you give it to us.
Okay.
See if we can get seventy-five percent.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, for your time. It's like, we won't know unless we try, but it's gonna be another bit. Well, six years, I don't wanna have to pay a CRA for it, and they don't have that long, no, no.
Recording in progress. We would like to welcome you to the city council meeting held on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. We apologize for the little bit of a delay and starting late. We welcome all of you here, it is always nice to have our residents here with you. I am Mayor Sherry Bingham, and I will be conducting this meeting. We are going to go ahead and have a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Fowers, and then a reverence by Councilmember Northrup.
Good all, please stand and be seated after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, as we meet this evening as a city council and citizens of the world, we thank you for the blessings that we receive from living in this community, and from the friendships and bonds which we share. We're grateful for our freedoms and our nation, and ask that thy watchful eye will be upon us in directing those who lead this country, lead our state, and also here in our community, that we can do the best things in the best interests of the citizens. We're grateful for the, those who serve our country and those who protect our freedoms, and we ask for thy watchful eye over them and their, and protection, to be with them and their families. We are grateful for what we have here, and we pray for these things, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started on any of our consent items, I would like to introduce Brandon Miles. He is the prosecutor, prosecuting attorney that Reed Richards mentioned at our last meeting. And we do have to have a prosecutor because Hepburn City doesn't have their own court. And so we go through the Roy Court, and Brandon Richards was serving as our prosecutor, and he, they reached out to Weber County, and Brandon has agreed to do that, so we're happy to have you with us. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to just present or tell us about yourself, and if anybody has any questions?
My thought I'd comment at least introduce myself, my name is Brandon Miles. I am a new resident of Hooper City as of last fall, I moved here with my family, and we built a house. A lot of pitching wedge, distance over that direction there. Uh, I've been a prosecutor with Weber County for almost twenty-two years, I'm the chief criminal deputy of our office, supervise nineteen other attorneys and about seventeen other staff. Have done every kind of case from basic traffic cases all the way up to capital murder, uh, for the county, and so I've got, uh, a wealth of experience that I'd be happy to bring, uh, to the city, uh, which is my community, uh, that I wanna make sure is a safe community, welcoming community, uh, for my family and everybody else is here. I come, I believe, with a number of benefits, uh, that includes not just my experience, but, uh, a number of additional resources because of the nature of my office, which is the Weber County Attorney's Office. I have nineteen other prosecuting attorneys from which to draw from, uh, to deal with particular issues that may come up in any criminal case and/or, uh, built-in coverage, if I'm gone, somebody will be there, because I have plenty of people that can come and do this. Uh, my job is such that it has flexibility, that I get to sort of choose when I can put my hours in and make sure that I, uh, put in all the time necessary to make sure that, uh, the cases from this city are prosecuted fairly, uh, and, and make sure that the job gets done well. Um, so I just wanted to come, introduce myself, answer any questions, uh, that you may have about the duties. Uh, still trying to get my head around exactly how much, now there is, but I gave a couple of proposals to the mayor about how we could handle this, if you're interested in doing that, uh, and I'm happy to sort of take your questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Miles?
I'm usually the one asking the questions, but now you can cross-examine me.
Do you do the planning commission and the city councils, I'm sorry?
This would just be criminal prosecution for the city, so the civil stuff, my understanding is Reed Richards will continue to do that, uh, for a little while, and then, uh, he'll move on. Now, I, my background is not civil, uh, and so as I've indicated, I'm not, uh, I know enough to be dangerous, but probably just that. But there are people who spend more of their career doing that, including people in my own office that are civil attorneys that deal with all the same kinds of issues you might be encountering, planning zoning, human resources, contracting, et cetera. Uh, and if push comes to shove, I can, uh, see if one of them are interested in coming over and handling that part.
Okay.
Which is pretty consistent with what I've done in some other cities as well, I'm a city prosecutor for North Ogden. Uh, I split the duties for UNO in Huntsville as well, uh, and so the court's duties are very similar. We've split the civil and the criminal functions, as most lawyers do, they start to specialize in certain areas. Other questions?
Any other questions? Okay.
This is easy, you're right.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you, I guess let me know, and we'll be in further touch.
Sure, okay, thanks a lot. And we do not have the minutes ready for tonight, so if I could just have someone make the motion to table the minutes, and we will approve those at our next meeting, which will be held on July seventeenth.
How much should we table the minutes, or was it July, or June fifth, twenty twenty-five?
We've had a motion made by Councilmember Wilcox, is there a second?
I'll say.
Second was made by Councilmember Marigoni, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we will table and approve those minutes then, on our, at our next city council meeting, which will be held on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Okay, the next thing is a discussion and a presentation, this will be by Kami Moss, our city treasurer on the fraud risk assessment.
Sherry, really quick, do we wanna do public comment, please skip over public comment.
Oh, I apologize, we have public comment, hold up, I'm sorry Kami.
You're fine.
Now is the time for public comment, if there is any comment that would like to be made, if you will come up, state your name, and you have three minutes.
My name's Bruce Taylor. I would like to talk about the meeting that was held two weeks ago, June fifth, with Stuart on Smiths. For over a year now, you have been telling Stuart Adams your concerns and your thoughts, but Stuart is still saying the exact same things. After me listening to that meeting, here are some of your thoughts that you, you expressed. Not in favor of the CRA, would be a huge liability right out of the gate. These homes are not going to be affordable. The city does not have the money to cover their end of it. More comments from you people. The pump station should be paid for by the developer. For over a year, everyone has said that, Stuart still don't wanna pay a penny for it. Comments, other comments that you made on the LRB study. Hooper will collect a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars per year over the twenty-five years. Stuart's estimate, when he first come in this a year ago, was at least a half a million dollars per year. Some more comments from you people, the project is massive, if it was just a small grocery store. The commercial part must be built first, we'd like to see patio homes fifty-five and over. Stuart don't make money on patio homes fifty-five and over homes, he makes money on commercial. One more comment that came from you up front. How do we move forward or even entertain a motion like this when it goes against the land use policy that is in the general plan? Here are my comments now, I believe that at least three of you are totally against this project. And the other two, I believe, are still on the fence. On June fifth, two weeks ago, it was a great opportunity to have a motion to have this project denied. But it did not happen, no one had a motion to deny this project. Stuart Adams walked out of this meeting just smiling and grinning, knowing that we are still confused. That is exactly what Stuart does well. Also, does listening to the citizens mean anything? We had three citizens that wanted Smiths to happen, and we had ten that voiced their opinion against this project. It's crazy, but after the citizens of this city voiced their opinion, they are never spoken of again. Some of you may not be here after November, those people, the new people, if voted in, I can tell you they are all for this Smiths project. I would hope that if given another opportunity, that we would have a chance to have a motion to have this denied before you people, some of you people leave. All of you know that our mayor is totally for the Smiths proposal, please do the right thing. As the lady said from Syracuse two weeks ago, this is a small town, I wanna keep it that way. Please be a part of stopping this, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Amy Kristofferson, and I actually agree, I felt like last week you guys could have, um, put up a motion to deny the project. You said no CRA and no TIF, and here we are, this whole work meeting, talking about those same things again. But I'm just gonna share something about why we should have nothing to do with Stuart Adams, and he just shouldn't have any more of our tax money. So, five easy steps to get two million dollars of Utah taxpayers' money. Ronald Mortensen, PhD, FSO, he's retired. Number one, have great political connections with the governor and key state legislators, like, say, for example, the forum do, Matt Lusti, Election Hive Campaign Management Services, Steve Waldrep, Cox Housing Advisor in Native California, and Derek Brown, lobbyist and former legislator. Number two, set up a nonprofit organization, Utah Workforce Housing Advocacy. Shortly before the start of the legislative session, with a mission of convincing Utahns that our housing problem is driven by a lack of supply rather than by the excess demand that has been created by the governors and legislatures, unlimited growth policies. This allows elected officials, i.e. Stuart Adams, developers and other related business interests to use taxpayer funds to further their agenda by having the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity grant the money to a nonprofit, non-government organization, so an NGO. Number three, have the legislature earmark one million dollars of taxpayer funds for your NGO and have it granted to you by the GOEO, so the government opportunity. Um, note Senator Jerry Stevenson and Stuart Adams had Election Hive help manage their campaigns, and both senators exert tremendous influence over how taxpayer funds are appropriated. Uh, number four, submit an invoice, invoice to GOEO for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars before any contract has been signed, and have that invoice quickly paid after the contract is eventually signed over a month later. Once the taxpayer funds are received, funnel them to entities and or people with close links to the Utah Workforce Housing Authority. Um, A, sixty-two thousand five hundred to Biz, uh, Biz Devops Consulting. Dan Hemmert, who's also in a partner in Election Hive, um, I'll skip to it because I'm running out of time. Hundred thousand dollars to Envision Utah, Senate President Stuart Adams, Board of Directors John Cox and Partner Election Hive Board of Governors. Even before the first million dollars is spent, asked the legislature for another two million dollars in order to get an additional million dollars. Um, I won't keep reading, but the fact of the matter is, is he's got all kinds of hands in all kinds of pockets, and he's influencing everything, and he's telling, telling you that the citizens of Hooper need to pay for more of his, his stuff, and that we need to give him more of our tax money. I don't want this project, I know I've heard people say that who's we, I would say personally, but I, but I don't think we want it, and we should have nothing to do with Stuart Adams.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't gonna get up, but Larry Rupelotto, uh, you know, these numbers we throw, uh, Ryan, I agree with you, these numbers are just, I listened to the work meeting, uh, you know, my accountant, uh, business, he says, Larry, if you want four and four, or two and two to equal three, I can make those numbers work. And, uh, I really believe that, uh, but my heart tells me, uh, that this is a good thing, that it's gonna, uh, uh, it's gonna work for Hooper, and we can throw out all the numbers we want, and I could give you a bunch of numbers, uh, my brother ran me a bunch of numbers on, uh, and, uh, forgive me, it was that ChatGPT or the A1, all this stuff, and, uh, those numbers are really amazing, but they're numbers and that, and so I just hope that you guys will all vote your heart, and, uh, and most of these meetings, I've, uh, you know, it's usually the people that are against things that, uh, come up here to voice their opinion, and when good people or people that want things remain silent, uh, uh, it doesn't work and that. But anyway, those are just my thoughts, and, uh, kudos to you guys to sit and listen to all this stuff and try to figure out all these numbers, uh, you know, I, I, I get it, it takes an accountant to do it. Uh, one last thing, uh, I've never known who Stuart Adams is, uh, I hear all this negative stuff, uh, uh, throughout talking to people and that, that he's here to make money, and, uh, that's all it is. Uh, I, I did do some research, and I found one guy that knows Stuart, knows his dad, knows his grandfather, and his comment to me is, uh, yes, he is gonna make money off of this, Larry, but he is honest. What he says he's gonna do, he's gonna do, and I hope that that's the case with Stuart. I still don't know him, but, uh, you know, if it's not Stuart, it's gonna be somebody else, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to remain calm and quiet until Larry got up, I'm Lori Brinkerhoff, and first of all, I appreciate your service. I'm Lori Brinkerhoff, and first of all, I appreciate your service. It's hard. It's hard to be in the seat to take comments like this and to remain unprejudiced, and sometimes you get beat up up there, but I don't know. I agree with Larry, this is a great opportunity. The Smiths Corporation, I think, is a golden egg. I think Weber County has 16 municipalities. I think 15 of those are thriving. I think Hooper could benefit from this, and I think Weber County's Smiths Corporation is offering a golden egg, and I think this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Yes, it'll be some initial investment, but economic development is essential, and Larry's right, it's going to happen sooner or later. So I advise you to be on the front end of this, to ask the right questions. I do know Stewart Adams, and he's a very reputable guy. Just talked to him at the door for several minutes before coming in. I know him to be honest. He is in economic development. He is in a leadership position. He has disclosed that all along, but those are the types of people who do business in our leadership in Utah and our government, and I find him to be trustworthy. So I appreciate your time, but yes, I think, not just Larry, and I think there's many, many, many citizens who may not be aware of these proceedings, may not have the time, but I don't think that we're the only two in the community who support this program.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comments, now we will move on to you, Kami, to go through our Fraud Risk Assessment.
So every year, we are required to complete what's called a Fraud Risk Assessment from the State Auditor's Office. Basically, they ask us to go through and just kind of evaluate where the city's at with various things like, have you written, adopted a written policies on conflict of interest, curma, ethical behavior, some various other things? Does the entity have adequate basic separation of duties? So they basically just ask us to go through, evaluate that, and give ourselves a score. This year, our score is 355 out of 395, which is still a very good score. We don't have an internal audit function, and that docked us, and then we don't have a formal audit committee either, and those are the two things that we just are missing on that. So basically, all we have to do is just inform you that we've completed that and present that to you as a council. So that's what that purposes, and it doesn't need any motion or anything. It's just simply letting you know that we have completed that, and it will be posted on the State Auditor website.
So how do we get an internal audit?
So to, you mean an internal audit function? So basically, you have to have somebody within the entity that designs an actual, like, going through and evaluating and auditing your stuff internally. It takes a fair amount of time to do. Most smaller entities do not have that. However, you know, it's something that is just time consuming, because basically, we devise like an audit program of different areas, and then that's done, you know, however often we see it's fit. We have our external auditors, so, and that's, the state only gives it 20 points on the whole thing. If we wanted to do an audit committee, that might be the one I would recommend to look at over an internal audit, but both are very good items to consider. Any other questions? Did that help, Bryce? Hopefully. Okay.
Any other questions for Kami on that? Okay, Kami, so before we move into the public hearing on, let's see, amending the 2024-25 budget and approving, do you want to explain anything to us on the, so residents would know, on the amended budget, or would you like us just to move into the public hearing?
I can go through it real quick.
Okay, thank you.
I believe you've all been given a copy of it. Am I correct? You have a copy? Okay. If not, I printed extras, just in case. I am proposing one additional item there. So I'm proposing that we also add the ability to make a transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund, and I'll go into detail on that real quick, just because that is one additional item I would recommend to add to what you already have. Right now, we have budgeted $235,143 to budget to transfer over to the General Fund. However, I'm, or from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund, as we've discussed previously, that the State Auditor requires us not to hold more than 35% of our revenues for the year in our General Fund. If we are over 35%, that is what we call a finding, and that's a good finding to have, honestly. It's the best one, but it basically just means that we've got too much money in the General Fund, we need to move it over to the Capital Projects Fund. And as I was evaluating our current financials and stuff, I would like to propose that we adjust that up by $700,000, just to give us that wiggle room so we don't have that finding. If we don't need to do that much, we won't do that much, but we budget it for some road construction and everything, and just depending upon when those bills come in, we may or may not be right there. So I would rather budget for the amendment with that and then have that option than to not budget for it and have a problem. Does that make sense? So it's not really we're spending the money, we're just taking it from one fund and sticking it into the other fund. Does that? Do I have confusion on that? If that doesn't make sense. So I would propose that additional item. The other items that you have is, we have proposed some increases in some various revenues, decrease in our cemetery services. We were decreasing those by about $24,000, maybe, would it be good if I just went through it line by line? Is that probably best, so everybody could hear? Okay. So our grants of local units, we're proposing a $10,000 increase. Our zoning and subdivision fees, we're proposing a $10,000 increase. Cemetery lot fees, we're proposing a $12,000 increase. Cemetery services, we're proposing a $24,000 decrease, not as much revenue as we had budgeted for on that. And then we have another category that we had some additional revenue in, so we're proposing a $19,500 increase. So the overall in revenue increased by $27,500, and we're asking that we increase our Halloween Haunt budget item. Again, that's something that we have not separated out in the past, so this allows us to separate it so that we can track things more clearly. So we're asking that we give a budget of 20, or 45,000, or 4,500, sorry, get the comma right. Our Tomato Days, we discussed the need to increase that, so we're proposing that we increase that by 30,000, and then education and community promotion, decrease that by 10,500. So the total expenditures would go up 24,000, so the net effect would be a positive 3,500 more revenue. Any questions?
Any questions from council on any of those?
So I still don't see any of the income from the rental that we received throughout 2025.
Yeah, so on your next financial statements that you receive, which are this close to being done, Ryan had to review them before I had them out, but anyways, that does show the revenue from the rental. We did receive that deposit, and it came in in May, and so you'll get that with that financial statement, and that is part of the current year budget.
Okay, so that will be on this amended budget?
It's, I didn't include it in the amended budget because it's additional revenue, so we don't necessarily get in trouble for having more income. We only get in trouble if we spend more, or if we have that more than 35% of our fund revenues, so.
I was just going to point out that one thing I have a little heartburn with is Tomato Days being over so much money, you know, over $30,000 over budget. It seems like that is a continuing problem, that we have Tomato Days, that it doesn't stay within budget, and I think that we need to make sure from now on that it does stay within the budgeted amount that we have for it.
Yeah, and I think the intention, and as you've seen with the budget, we're trying to break things out more so that there is more clarity as to, yes, you get this much on this amend, you get this much on this amend, because in the past, it's just been up to, overall, the person doing it just kind of tried to stay, and there was a whole lot of guidance. So we're trying to give that, and I think we've made some good steps. Is it bombproof? No, nothing's ever bombproof, but I think we're trying to do that, and also, we, in the past, have budgeted for, not budgeted for a grant, but spent like we had the grant, and this time, we didn't get the grant. As you probably remember reading in the financials I give out every month, there was a blurb on, this is kind of why we ran into some problems, and so that's why it did go over, but that's, you know, we're doing the best we can to provide that information.
Okay. And then if I ask what's included in the other?
The other, I believe, there was, I'm trying to remember the exact line I read without pulling it up, but there was, there was something that happened that we had a source of income, and I think it might have been, no, it wouldn't have been the rental property, because that wasn't rented the whole year. I'm going to have to get back to that, honestly.
I was just curious.
Sorry.
No worries. When it says other, I was just wondering what source of income.
Yeah, so it's, it's kind of like your, your other things that don't really fit in any of the other categories within the city, like, you know, maybe the rental or things like that, that would go into that category.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I can look, give a little insight too on Hooper Tomato Days, at least for the last 10 years. One thing about Hooper Tomato Days is, like Kami said, we've always written for grants, and it is not, not very often does it happen within a city that you use zero budget money on a celebration, and Hooper Tomato Days has paid for itself, with the exception of last year, because there was not grants written or grants received. This year, as we mentioned, we already have received a $50,000 grant, so if everything stays the same, you will see it is like it has been in the last, like I say, 10 years, where not only does the celebration pay for itself, but we actually come in the positive of sometimes 20, sometimes it's even been as high as $30,000. So it was that, that big decrease we're seeing there is because last year, there was not a grant that was written or received.
Keep in mind, when we do the budget, we usually have whatever the income is be equal to the expenditure. So yeah, we had to pay some of that this year, but for the whole celebration, we maybe paid 30,000-ish. Does that make sense? Better sense?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just noticed that we had amended the budget for Tomato Days on.
Multiple.
Multiple occasions.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
Usually it was income, because like you say, you know, yeah.
I'd have to say without looking back, but yeah.
Yeah, because they, they have to put in the budget, like you said, whatever, so if it was $90,000, and we brought in more than it had to be amended, because it has to be a balanced budget, so yes, that's correct.
Any other questions? Anything on the amendment?
And did that addition that I talked about make sense to everybody? Okay. Which I can give you a copy of the, that with that. Do you guys want one? Let me hand it out. I've seen yes, but I don't want to hand you too many papers.
Okay, so if there's not any other questions on amending the budget, and then also, the public hearing is on the certified tax rate, correct?
Yes.
Is there anything you, yeah, you can tell us about that.
You're going to get sick of me tonight. Sorry, you're already. Okay, so Hooper City, you're required to adopt the certified tax rate within the budget. We have requested just the amount that the state has proposed, which is .000280%. So that would be the certified tax rate, so that we would be adopting, which generates a pro, well, they're estimating that it would generate $266,053 for the city.
So did that change? That seems pretty close to where we have been.
It is a little bit different, but we're talking minute change. I think, I have to look what we were last year. I thought it showed on the sheet, but I guess it doesn't. So, but I can look that up for sure. Yeah, yeah, likely, because it would go down, and plus, you don't always collect 100%, so, but yeah. Unless you do truth in taxation, your tax rate goes down.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before, for Kami, before we move into a public hearing on amending the budget approving, and then?
Do you want me to go over the approving, the 25 and 26, because the public hearing's on that as well?
Morgan, I'm not certain. Do we have to do each of those public hearings separate, or can it be as one public hearing?
Yeah, I think it's one public hearing, so we'll do the amending, approving for both budget and certified, and we'll do a separate hearing for wage increase.
Okay, so just this will be the public hearing, but would you like Kami then to go over the budget before we do the public hearing on both of those?
I'm giving my shakes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so with the tentative budget that we had approved previously, we had an additional meeting, and so you should have received an updated one with the adjustments per our meeting. I think probably the easiest way to do this is I'll just kind of go over what the revenues are and the expenses and stuff, and then I'll highlight any changes that we made in that meeting. Now, the copy that you have would have had those changes in yellow, so any changes were highlighted in yellow for your information. So overall, there was no additional changes to revenues in our General Fund. For our General Fund, we have total income of $4,115,895 for the budget. And then within our expenditures, our general government, we did increase our council to $15,000, our executive to $12,000, and our planning commission to $9,800. So the total governance did go up to $48,500. And then the operating stayed at $4,18,850. Our general government, what we basically did was we reclassified some information from the wages down to training, so we created a line item for training. So overall, the budget stayed the same for the total for each category, but instead, we created that additional line item, so I won't go through each one of those numbers and bore you. So total government, general government expenditures were $5,87,700. And then on page five, our public safety stayed the same at $8,92,205. Our recreation and community events, we did increase our SIRD by $4,000 to allow for additional expenses of funds that we've already set aside for that, so that went up to $191,500. Then if we go to page six, our highways stayed the same at, for operating, we have Classy roads, stayed the same, $1,560,40. And then, so our total highways was at $2,186,180. Again, the change in the employees, you'll see there with just adding that employee training. Parks, similar thing, I won't go through each one, but our total parks stayed the same at $512,160. Community development on page nine stayed the same with $211,485. And then on page 10, our cemetery stayed the same, and we've kind of brought more information out on that as well. So we're doing $115,227, and then you'll see that transfers is adjusted. This is a transfer over to the Capital Projects, so we were transferring $400,000. So we were transferring $429,478 over to capital projects, which that was adjusted just to make the balance, the budget balance. Because we have to have a balanced budget. So that's general fund. Any questions there? Up there? Okay. Sewer, total income was $2,271,604. Total expenditures for operating was $1,308,354. Sorry. Our system maintenance was $77,500. Some equipment of $569,000. Employees, including an additional employee for the year, was $314,900. So our total operating expenditures was $1,965,254. We have a loan payment of $530 that comes due. And we also had some capital projects we were looking at. So our total expenditures were $2,902,714, which means that we actually have a decrease in fund balance of $631,110. I was gonna just point out, let me find the right sheet here. Sorry, too many papers here. That did account for sewer rate adjustment. So right now, the Central Weaver Sewer District is charging $20. They are increasing to $21,20. So we've accounted for that. Again, we're breaking that out and just showing it in and out, because we do not get to keep any of that. But Harper's portion before was 46. We're proposing that we increase it to 48,88. So $2.88's an increase on our portion. And that's accounted for in that budget. Any questions on sewer? Up there? Okay. And then garbage fund, we have total income of $854,052. Expenditures of $853,352. So an increase in the fund balance of $700. Pretty close there. That does account for the increase of a normal garbage can by $2, the increase of an additional can by $1.50, and a recycling can increase of $2. So it goes from $13.50 for a normal can to $15.50. Additional can from $9 to $10.50. Recycling from $7.50 to $9.50. Just to help cover those expenses. Any questions on that fund? The idea is that the garbage does not make money, that it tries to hold its own. It tries to just pay for itself. So, you know, we know we're gonna have increases in our garbage fees every year. So if we've collected too much next year, we just won't increase as much next year. So, you know, the, whatever our cost is to provide that service, it's not meant to make us a lot of money, is what the council has expressed their thoughts and their desires. So yes, pretty much. I would call it pass-through, but in essence, we're not making money off of it. Yeah. We're just trying to cover expenses. So. Any other questions on that? Okay. Stormwater, we have a total income of $213,760. And then our expenditures were $267,400. No capital projects were accounted for. And that is proposing that our stormwater fee goes from $5 to $6. And we would have a decrease in our fund balance still, but it's by $53,640.
I have a question on that.
Okay.
We have a project on 5900 West that needs to be done.
We were not going to budget for it, but if we want to, we can definitely.
So.
Put that in there.
I, I've heard that, that someone said the city council was not for it. But I, I don't think we ever said we're not for it, because we do need to do it. We were against the proposed amount.
Yeah, I think we.
There were some items that we needed to discuss in JV.
Yeah.
But that project, in my mind, has got to be done this year. If not, we're gonna, I mean, so I didn't see that in here, though.
So we didn't include it in because the council had expressed to me that they did not want to include it in here. They wanted to do it as an amended item when we knew the amount. We didn't want to put an amount in there that we didn't know. And so it was more so a thought process that we weren't putting it in there, and then we were gonna amend for it once we know that amount. And if need to, we can increase rates on that.
So where, where are we at on finding the actual cost, like?
I have not been given an update since our last meeting, so.
Yeah.
If you know a number, I am all for including it in this budget. That's great.
Well, the number we got from JV was 819. But there was probably at least a hundred, two hundred and fifty. There was, you know, probably not our responsibility.
And I think that was the problem, was that the council had expressed to me that they didn't want to include that because they wanted to still have that negotiating mechanism and not feel like it was already written.
So if we put that in, in this budget that you have right now, we put, say, $700,000, what, what does that look like?
It puts us $753,640 negative.
Right.
Yeah. Which we can do that, but I would, if.
Okay.
But then we could, once we come to an agreement, we can certainly amend the budget. We can amend the budget as much as we want throughout the year. And also, it would give us the opportunity, if we did it as amended budget, to evaluate what our rates need to be, if we need to reevaluate a rate increase. Whereas if we just pump it in tonight, it may not give us that opportunity to truly make a full decision. So it's up to you, but I personally wouldn't recommend that. If that makes sense? Does that? Any other questions, comments, concerns on that fund?
And there is money in the capital projects account that, like you've said, once we get that exact number, then we can amend the budget and then move that money from the capital projects back to that fund?
Yes, we could, we could do a transfer over to the enterprise fund from the capital projects. Or there is also some money set aside that is, I don't want to call it restricted. It's reserved or earmarked for a project like this within the sewer or a stormwater. So I think by, you know, being able to do that as amended item, once we know the amount, we can make a better discussion on where we want that money to come from and a better amendment. Does that make sense? I think it would, we'd just be more informed. Okay. Any other discussion on that fund? Okay.
We did, we discussed two employees on the, on the budget being added.
So we added one for stormwater, or not stormwater, sorry, sewer, because we did have that need for that additional sewer certification stuff. I do not have an additional employee.
There's, there's one under.
We changed.
Cemetery?
Okay, so we changed allocations of current employees. So it's not necessarily that we added any employees, we just changed allocations.
Okay. Do we need to figure that in the budget where we just changed allocations, like add the money?
That's already accounted for in the budget, yeah. So what we did is, we've looked at where our employees were allocated previously, which was very, very old numbers. And we sat down with management and staff, your public works director, and went through and said, okay, what does this person really spend their time doing? And how much time do they spend in this department? So that we can have a better accounting. It's not that we've increased the fees, we've just simply changed where the expenses go.
Okay, so you decreased it from another kind of main amount?
Yeah, we kind of rob Peter to pay Paul type thing to reallocate it so that it was more true and more correct.
Okay.
So to the best of our ability, without going through and tracking every hour. You know, we figured staff, your public works director, knows pretty much what his guys are doing. So we kind of said, okay, how much does this guy spend on cemetery? How much does this guy spend, spend in parks? You know, and just relooked at those percentages, because they haven't been reevaluated for many years.
So it's.
Which happens, it's a very common thing.
So is that why we have a person doing garbage that's worth a small amount of money?
Exactly, yeah.
Is they partially do garbage, but they have another job?
Exactly. Well, for example, your billing person. What does your billing person do? Your billing person does billings. Well, what's she billing for? She's billing for garbage, stormwater, your sewer. Well, shouldn't part of her time go to that, probably? You know? So we kind of went through and said, okay, let's try and, you know, not be aggressive, but let's allocate this a little bit so that it's more true accounting.
Okay.
More accurate.
All right, thank you.
Uh huh, you bet. Any other questions?
I, I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Ryan.
So the last line, page 18 of this year's budget. Fund balance, FY '25 is $740 or $61. Does that include what we just did to the amended FY '25 by two, to add the $935?
That doesn't. So that's just the change this year.
So that should actually go up $700.
Yeah, yeah. And my intention with that amendment is if we don't need to transfer that much, we won't transfer that much. You know, I don't want to transfer more than we need to, but obviously, I don't want to have a finding just because I didn't move money from one fund to the other, which, they're both general operating funds, so.
Well, basically, we're transferring in FY '25, $935, but we have license to transfer out in FY '26, $444, or 429, excuse me. So, but our starting point is $700,000 more than what it shows here.
Could be, yes, could be, yes, yeah. I don't want to say for sure until I've got the numbers from last year fix, but yes.
If we understand it does affect, that's kind of a no brainer, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so. And I did go over the capital projects, I'll quickly go over that. Capital projects, we have total income of $3,4896. Of that, as we discussed, we've got a transfer in from general fund of $429,478. And then our expenditures for the general fund would be $3,805,387. That includes some big projects, but one of them is the 5500 West to 5500 South to Davis portion that we know we need to pay. And that's $3,109. So overall, our capital projects fund would actually see a decrease in fund balance of $397,291 with this budget. And then, but if we've got extra, again, we'll transfer it to that capital projects. That's kind of what the capital projects is there for, is to allow us to save for big projects. Any other questions?
So the 5500 project. Oh, there's the, there's the income right there.
Yeah, yeah, the 5500 does have the 2.6, $2,609. Good point, right? And I should have pointed that out, that we have been offered for the income, so the net effects.
So then our portion is not 3.1?
No.
By that.
Yeah, whatever that is. I have my diet coke. You guys know me.
So I, I do have some questions on the health insurance. So, so from my understanding, we, we're gonna replace, can we say his name? Luke quit, so we're gonna replace him. Hire a new sewer. And then, and then was there just one employee that qualified for benefits, or was there more?
So there was one additional employee that did have benefits. When I do a budget and I have an empty space, I budget worst-case scenario. So worst-case scenario, assuming that whomever you hire was going to have full family coverage. So if that individual, and I mean, law doesn't allow you to discriminate against, you know, whether they need family or single. But if your individual did need just family or couple insurance, there would be, you know, a different, a decrease in that cost. But I always budget high.
What do our employees pay? What portion do they pay a month? Is it a couple hundred?
Correct me if, what is it, Morgan, is it 80? No. 90, 10.
90, 10.
Sorry. Yes, I was trying to remember, city to city.
It's a couple hundred a month, it sounds like. I was just looking at, you know, because obviously, budget, we need to save some money. I think maybe, and it's not a bad thing, but I think there's over budget in the health insurance, because I.
Possibly, yes.
I called the, so we have a 6.7% increase in premiums this coming up fiscal year. And so I just took when Luke was employed and just, you know, figured out how much he was gonna. So we spent about $146,000. And then you put the 6% on that. And then you add two more employees, which would be, say, another $45,000. So that puts us about $200,000. And we budgeted to 21, I think, to 21. And that doesn't include the, you know, the, the employees portion, which would probably be about, I don't know, $30,000, $40,000. So I don't know, so that's something to look at. There's probably some extra money budgeted in there.
Possibly, but I would rather budget.
Sure.
On the safer side, but yes, yes.
I just want to make everyone aware of that, that there could be some money allocated there that we're not gonna need, so anyway.
Yeah, possibility that, you know, and the idea is with the employees that, you know, you've, you've approved a merit increase that we've discussed, which is included there. And so that merit would be the one that they would, you know, get, or not merit, cost of living. Sorry, we did a cost of living, not merit. And so they'd get the cost of living increase, but then any additional expenses, we wouldn't necessarily spend more. You know, we just want to give enough to cover it, basically. If that makes sense? If that makes sense? Claris, bud? So.
Any other questions from the council on the budget, proposed budget for 2025, '26?
Well, I'm, I'm just concerned that we are at a point that our budget is so, it's such trouble. And I'm thinking, I, I don't have any problems with the way the budget's done or anything, but I'm thinking as a council, since we are stewards of the money, that maybe we need to cut some of these things. You know, maybe there's some areas where we can save some money. I know it might not be a lot, but anything that we can save might be beneficial to us in the long run. I, I don't know. I, I, I'm just concerned about how much some of this stuff costs. And I, I know it costs money to run a city. But there's just some, there's just some things that maybe we need to cut back a little on training or something. Maybe just have mandatory training that they need, or something of that nature. There's just some things that maybe we need to look at. And that's just my opinion.
We did have quite a few meetings, so.
Yes, yes, we have, but, you know, the more we get into it and the, you know, I've tried to look at ways that we could cut things and I, I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
So if we get in there and we see something where we can, we can always amend it.
Absolutely. You can amend the budget every, as much as you want throughout the year. Do I recommend that every time we have a council meeting? No. But, please don't do that to us. But however, we can amend it, yes. A budget is a guidance, not a written in stone document. And I'll be honest, as an accountant, it drives me nuts to do budgets because they're not written in stone. So it's, it's a creative gene that I've had to develop as an accountant. So budgets are definitely difficult, so anyways.
Okay, any other questions for Kami on the budget before we move into a public hearing? Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you Kami, some might come up as we, as we go along. So now we need to have a motion to move into a public hearing to amend the twenty twenty-four budget, to approve the twenty twenty-five budget, and approve the certified tax rate. So if I could get a motion for that public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we go into a public hearing.
Okay. Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Wilcox, it was seconded by Councilmember Hill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we are now moving into the public hearing, anyone that would like to come up and make a comment again, if you would state your name, and you have three minutes to address anything on these three items that we mentioned.
My name's Dan Thurgood, I work for Hooper. Training, you've got two people that can legally drive their trucks, two people, what happens if one of them gets sick and one of them's out of town? Training's important. Your sewer, you've got two people that know it, out of seven, someone needs to understand it besides just two people. I think if you have, if you're thinking about having lawyers, if you're sending somebody out there driving that big truck without a license, that's a liability, big liability. If you've got someone working on a source system that doesn't understand it, stuff breaks, use your imagination, training's important.
Okay, thank you.
Natalie Suick, I agree with Stan, training is important. I would just ask the council, how much are we paying our accountant, who didn't seem to be fully prepared tonight? How much are we paying the city council? I don't know, or what these elected and statutory officers are on the next agenda item, but I'm with you, Councilmember, you know, Marigoni, there are so many places you could cut costs. If you had an internal audit, auditor come in, they would cut costs, have Elon Musk come in, I'm telling you, there are places you can cut costs. I did budget for the federal government, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of budgets. I hear our accountants saying, I don't like to do budgets. Who does that? I don't understand. So I'm all for an internal audit, and I think you should start with the budget, and have somebody come in, whether it's internal or it's a group of people, but it seems to me, sitting here listening, and mind, mind you, I don't have all your documents, haven't been in all the meetings, but if your budget needs to be amended, you do it every, every time you meet, I don't care what the accountant says, I did it for federal government, hundreds of millions of dollar contracts. This is just out of whack, it's so far.
Laura, you bring your half again, and first of all, thank you for all your prep work. I know you spend hours and hours with your, your accountant and going over the budgets. Most people don't know, you'll spend two and a half, three hours behind closed-door sessions, and it's very complex. I remember sitting in twenty thirteen, twenty seventeen with Mayor Green and explaining every pocket and the funding. I, I appreciate Councilman Marigoni's comments that we need to cut back, but I think you need to keep in mind we're a growing population, and you cannot continue to offer good services, whether it be public works, sewer parks, with a growing population. As your population increases, so does your demand for services. So I appreciate, this is a hard thing, I was, don't have a printed copy, and I apologize, it might be available online, but I couldn't see a copy, I was curious, what was the, Weaver County Sheriff's, what are we currently paying them, and where does that stand in negotiations? I know that's always a big ticket item. In the past, I remember one, seven hundred fifty thousand to one point five, and there again, that's something we have to do, we have no choice in whether or not we contract, and we've looked at contracting with Roy City, that was really an option, a viable option, so I was just curious about what that number was, and thank you for your preparation. I don't question her, I don't question her numbers, it's a very difficult, challenging thing, and every city varies in different entities, but looking for our revenue comes in and allocation that goes out, there's less and less to go around, and so there again, before I let her answer, I'm going to encourage you to look at commercial development, because that generates a point of sale revenue with every single purchase, whether it be pharmacy, gas, bread, eggs. I know the pharmacy alone generates about two million dollars in sales every month, because, yeah, my husband is a pharmacist with Smith's, has been for thirty-three years, but I, just like I said, that is a great source of income, and we're going to have the money anyway going to gas and groceries, it seems like a no-brainer, so if she could answer about this sheriff, I'm happy. Gotcha. Seven, the amount that we have budgeted for the police is seven hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-one, and then we also have the animal control shelter, forty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-one, your animal control bond of eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five, animal control services of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight. So, did that answer everything on that? One thing, you can amend the budget, and I'm happy to amend it as much as you want.
Can I just make a comment to those comments, Jerry? Stan, thanks for your comment, because in our budget meetings, we actually hashed that out. The original proposal was just to do a pay-for-performance thing, which we were like, well, how do we kind of gauge on who gets what, and this, and percentages, and everything else, and who, who judges the employee's performance? So we, we went from that to putting the money into training, and because we felt like here's something to better your employment as an employee for a city was to get a CBL license, or learn something on a, a computer program, or have the city pay for a train so we don't have a liability, you know, and so the council felt like that was the best path to go down, was to put the money in training for our employees, so thanks for bringing that up. And Kami, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are required as a city by state law to have an internal audit every year, is that correct?
An external audit.
External audit.
Yeah, an external audit is your independent auditors coming in and doing your audit, which you currently have done every year. An internal audit would require that you have somebody that is qualified to go through, and an internal audit in a city capacity would be more so going through and looking at, okay, are things properly classified, and we'd have to come up with like a whole program, an audit program is what it requires, and so it's very much different than what a federal internal audit would be if it's a city internal audit, so.
And I'd just like to clarify, Stan, I wasn't talking about the stuff that you guys need, I was talking about training that maybe is not really needed, but that people attend. I think that it's very important that you guys are trained, and that you have backups. It's just, we do have some extra training that's out there, and maybe we need to look at that. So I never would put anybody in danger or not having to be certified.
If I can make a comment too, one thing we need to understand here in Hooper, and most of you are probably aware of this, in the twenty-five years we have been a city, I would dare say we maybe have one or two more employees than we have had. I know from at least the last ten years, we're probably down a couple of employees, even though our population continues to grow. We are doing everything we can, and I know this seems like a lot of money, and so you say, oh, Hooper has a budget of four million, but we already heard we almost spent a fourth of that just on our police department alone, and if the raises go in, that we're thinking they will, probably next year, our police will go up by another two hundred thousand dollars. We have excellent staff that are here working because we do have bare bones, and they are covering every job. I know very few other cities with a population that we have, if you look at Weaver County, with the exception of Ogden City. We have Roy City, West Haven City, they're larger than Hooper, we are the next largest city, and we have less employees. So we are expecting our employees to do a lot, we are taking care of a lot of roads, we continue to grow, so I, I feel like, yes, maybe there are some things that we can pack, but for the most part, really not. We have ongoing expenses that we continually have as a city, and as was mentioned, we have spent at least, I would say, eight hours probably as city council through budget meetings, maybe even ten. We have had more budget meetings than ever we have had this year because we have gone through and tried to separate everything out. So we see it's sewer covering itself, it's garbage, it's a cemetery, we have gone through with countless hours with city council and our accountant, trying to get all of this in place, and so I, I feel like we are doing what we can as far as our budget.
Is there any other comments from the audience for the public hearing? Okay, seeing none then, if we can move back into a, motion to move back into our regular meeting?
So moved.
So the motion was made by Councilmember Fowers, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second was made by Councilmember Northrup, all in favor?
Aye.
That was approved, and we're going to move back then into our regular meeting. The next one we have then is a public hearing on a proposal to increase wages for elective and statutory officers, and do you, do I come up and say anymore on that, Kami?
Just tell you what.
Okay.
The council's idea is. Sorry. Just a second, let me grab my laptop. Okay, so the council in the budget, they wanted to look at doing, the council would get a hundred and fifty dollars a month and fifty dollars a meeting, the mayor would then go up to a thousand dollars a month, and your planning commission goes up to fifty dollars a month and fifty dollars a meeting. Any questions on that? And that is included in the budget as was requested.
Okay, thank you, and one thing when this was brought up in our meeting, I don't know when the last time was that the city council had any sort of raise at all, I believe it's been quite a few years, and so what the city council was getting was a hundred dollars a month and twenty-five dollars a meeting, which again, when the comparison was done to other cities within the county, Hooper City was one of the lowest, so those were, and again, it was with the, the planning commission as well, and also the same with the executive, which is the mayor. And so we, any discussion on this before we move into the public hearing?
Okay, then can I have a motion, and we will move into a public hearing on the proposal to increase the wages for the elective and statutory officers?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, the motion is made by Councilmember Hill, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second is made by Councilmember Marigoni, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now moving into a public hearing on this proposal, and again, you
can come up to the microphone, state your name, and you have three minutes. Okay, seeing no one come up on that public hearing, we will have a motion then to move back to our regular meeting.
I'll make that motion as well.
That motion was made by Councilmember Hill, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second is made by Councilmember Wilcox, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're now moving back into our regular meeting, any discussion from the council on this proposal? We probably already talked about it considerably in our meetings. Okay, then, if seeing none other than, we are going to move on to our action items. Then the first action item is a motion, which is the approval of the resolution number R twenty twenty-five zero one, amending the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. So is there a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution. I don't want to.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution number R two zero two-five dash oh one, amending the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Northrup, it was seconded by Councilmember Hill, any discussion on this motion?
I'll just make a comment that I've made or urged here, I think there were several amounts of money that were paid during the year, that the, the council was apprised of that after the fact, I mean, the money was already spent, it was already paid, and we went several months without ever knowing about that, and I have some real concerns about that. So as far as amending the budget to support that, I'd have a hard time doing that.
So the, the amounts we're amending the budget for was on this sheet, which had to do with the, she's listed here, the grants, the zoning, you have, but anyway, it's going to be a roll call vote, and so it's on these amended budgets, any other comments from council, if not, we will move to the roll call vote to amend the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. So we will start with Councilmember Wilcox.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup.
Aye.
Councilmember Marigoni.
Nay.
Councilmember Marigoni. Okay, the motion carries. Okay, the next one then is a motion, approval of wage increases for elective and statutory officers.
I'll make the motion to approve wage increases for elective and statutory officers, as explained.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Hill, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second was made by Councilmember Northrup, any discussion on the motion? Okay, and this does not need to be a roll call vote.
It should be.
Should, should it be?
It should be.
Okay, yeah, it didn't, it didn't list, does it need to?
I think it does, but I'd rather say yes than no.
Does that, okay, it just didn't say that on our agenda, okay? We will go ahead then and do a roll call vote, this time we will start with Councilmember Fowers.
Again, I had the same concerns when this was brought up, that I was never, felt like I, I was elected to serve, and so I would, it'll be nay, it'd increase my pay.
Okay, Councilmember Marigoni.
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup. Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next one is the motion, and again, this will be a roll call vote, this is the approval of resolution number R twenty twenty-five zero two, approving the certified tax rate.
I'll make that motion to approve the certified tax rate of point zero 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 two eight zero.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Hill, is there a second?
I should maybe mention the resolution number, R dash twenty twenty-five dash zero two.
Okay, thank you. The motion was made by Councilmember Hill, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second was made by Councilmember Fowers, this time we will start with Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup.
Aye.
Councilmember Marigoni.
Aye.
Councilmember Fowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, motion carries. Okay, the next one then is a motion, roll call vote on the approval of resolution number R twenty twenty-five zero three, approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. So we need a motion for that, and then it will be a roll call vote. Is there someone that would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to, for the approval of the resolution number R two zero two-five dash oh three, approving the twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine, twenty-six budget.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Northrup, is there a second?
You know, I'd like to maybe add to that motion, I think, I, I understand what Dell was referring to, and totally understand that on the amended budget, I think I would like to see that one of the city council, and we, we designated Ryan to be a signer on the checks, I think. I think in the sake of transparency, I think he should be a signer on every check possible, that unless they're going to be late, we talked about that. And I think that would, I think that's kind of where we're at right now, so, um, if we can put that in the motion as well, Lisa's comfortable with that, or if we can do that, I, I, I don't even know if we can do it, but I think Ryan can be a signer on the checks on the budget, just so we have kind of an inside. Because we, we were, there were some surprises, no doubt, there were some surprises this year.
So that would need to be a separate motion. We could do that on our next meeting in July. Would be something tonight. What we are doing is we are approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And we have had a motion made.
Hand is up.
Sorry. So keep in mind that the budget has to be treated separate, um, from your ordinances. Your ordinance would be the place that you would put something like that into effect. The budget is a separate item, and I clarified that, and so that is, um, we sent an email to read and basically clarified that, yes, there is that clear definition of one is a budget item and one is an ordinance. And they are definitely two separate items, so how you're administering it, you could change your ordinance, but the budget is its own document. Does that make sense? So, sorry, hopefully that helps a little bit.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion has again been made by Councilmember Hill. Is there a second to approve the budget? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Northrup, is there a second to approve the budget?
So I'll, I'll second it with the amendment that we put that on the next meeting's agenda as well. So, I mean, it's not an emotion, but it's, it's part of the discussion, so anyway, um, I'll second that motion, the approval of the budget.
Okay, so the second was made by Councilmember Hill. This will be done by a roll call vote. So Councilmember Northrup.
Aye.
Councilmember Marigoni.
Aye.
Councilmember Fowers.
Would, would you just clarify what Ryan did, that this would show up again on our?
Not, not the budget. The budget has to be approved. If the budget is not approved by June thirtieth, then the city closes its doors. We have no employee, you know, we can't spend any money.
Well, that's not exactly what would happen. It wouldn't really close its stores, but.
Well, we could not spend any money if we don't have a budget approved.
So if, uh, it would be on next agenda in July.
Yes.
And.
To change the ordinance.
Yes, but that would be something then that you could add on the agenda for July. That's really not something that we would be voting on tonight as far as approving the budget.
As far as Ryan being put on the check, has assigned that ordinance changed?
That would be something you would put on the agenda for us to talk about in July.
That's correct.
Yes, but tonight what we're doing is we're approving the budget.
Right.
Okay, so we're down to council, okay. Councilmember, um, Wilcox?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Okay, so the budget passes. Okay, are there any other, we generally don't do too public?
It was on this table.
That's okay. It's on our agenda, public comments. Are there any other public comments?
One more. I wish I didn't come to these tonight, but I heard the mention of the grants, and I have to thank you for the grants you've done the last thirty-five years. That playground out there, I bring my grandchildren to almost nightly, and the pickleball courts are sensational. I love to put them in, and then you did the tables and the lights, and we play every night at eight-thirty. I'm going home and change right now, so thank you for reaching out and putting the resources in there. I think it's a great investment in our community.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to stand again, but I'm going to stand because something has been really bothering me. I come to the city councils, and some of us have offline conversations, and you know who you are. And I feel like our mayor is steamrolling over the top of you, and it feels like, and it's not just me thinking this, and it's not in my head. I've talked to my neighbors, I've talked to people around, and they just don't come to these meetings anymore. They feel the same way, and I would ask that you city council members go with what you originally had, you know, in your mind, what you were going to go with, and stop letting people steamroll over you because it's very obvious that's happening.
Any other of the comments before we adjourn? Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion. Okay, I'm going to make the motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Northrup, seconded by Councilmember Marigoni. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion's adjourned. Thank you for coming.